Everyone. Need to get out my stuff. Good morning, everyone. Let me get my papers that I'm supposed to read in order to get us started and then we'll carry on. So, welcome to the July 15 meeting, Measure D Study Session of the San Luis Coastal Unified School District Board of Trustees. At this time, we'd like to ask that those in attendance, please keep your videos off and audios muted unless you're presenting information or speaking in public comment. We're offering translation services for our Spanish-speaking attendees. To access translation, please click on the globe at the bottom of your screen and then the language. At this time, we'd like to ask if anyone who needs translation would please click on the participants icon at the bottom of your screen and raise your hand. Wait to see here.
Our translator is having technical difficulties getting on, but I don't see anybody in the room that has raised their hands.
Okay, well, let's, we'll get started then, and then when the translator comes on, we'll, we'll continue with that. Okay, so first thing is, we do have some public comment. We have one written public comment. And I'm going to go ahead and read that. And then if there are other public comments, Ms. Dawson will help me with that. So this is from Sharon Moore. According to the American Institute of Economic Research, there is no clear scientific evidence that masks work to mitigate risk to the wearer or those that come into contact with the wearer. Requiring children five to 12 years old to wear a mask all day while at school is unnecessary and harmful. Imagine no smiles, no recognition of understanding, no frowns of concerns. Children need to be expressive, see encouragement on teachers' faces. The survival rate for children and teens that get COVID is 99.995%, and the symptoms are mild. Please look to other states that are mask-free and see the statistics that they have available. I ask for you to reconsider your position of masks for the 2021 school year. Ms. Dawson, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
No, I don't see any hands right now.
Okay, then let's move on to item number 4.01, Strategic Board Focus Middle School and High School Review Feedback. And I believe Dr. Prater, you're going to be leading that discussion?
Yes, I actually am going to hand this off to Adrian and Becca for their, their framing out of the, of the, of the day and the topics, and then we'll move from there. And I have, just so you know, I have Diane Frost, Leslie, and Rick joining us today to answer any questions that you might have or clarifications that you may have. So Adrian, why don't you go ahead and get started?
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our last strategic board session. And it's going to be in two parts. One of the things we'd like to cover today is to talk and get your discussion and feedback on middle school and high school goals. As remember, we were doing goal span conversations throughout this process. The other thing we want to do is talk to you about a draft document that we've put together that encapsulates all the strategic vision and direction from our conversations thus far. So before we launch into talking about middle school and high school, I wanted to just give you a quick overview of our process and where we have been and how we got here. So I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see this? Yep, great. So you got from us in advance of this meeting, a draft document, the District Strategic Direction 2021-2025 for your review. This document encompasses input from the district administrators, the school board, parents, students, and community. When the district staff were in putting input into this document and reviewing this document, they were doing it through the lens of all the comments that they have received from parents, the student senate, the youth truth surveys, and the community over the last couple of years. It's also the culmination of hours of one-on-one conversations, staff presentations, and group discussion. And it contains content agreed to by the board in our past five sessions. So just a review on our process. We started in February. We had six sessions together where we talked about short and long-term goals. We also talked about your vision for the district long-term. We bound these conversations in a grade span framework. So we talked about preschool through kindergarten, preschool through third grade. We talked about four through six. We talked about middle school. We talked about high school. And how the situations are unique for each of these grade spans and age groups. Staff compiled current data and trends that they were seeing by these grade spans. They presented their vision and ideas for the future for these age groups. We conducted surveys with board members and had one-on-one conversations with each of you about your thoughts on vision and values and goals for the district. And then we, we developed this with board and staff input. We came up with a vision statement. We revised your mission statement. We came up with core principles and values to help guide decision-making for staff and the board. And we talked about goals for each one of these grade spans, both short and long-term. And I have an asterisk here by short because I just wanted to remind the group that the short-term goals that we talked about in the early grades, we shifted those into your process with Dr. Prater in reviewing annual priorities that you discussed on June 7. So this final document just has the longer-term goals in it because all your goals for next school year have been encapsulated into that process with him. This final document has been reviewed by both staff and then, of course, is with you right now for your review. And I can't see everybody while I'm presenting, so just give me a holler if anybody has any questions if I can't see you. So just a reminder why we went through this process. It's the school board's duty to create a vision and strategic direction for the district. And the post-pandemic world may look very different than it has in the past and could allow for really great opportunities for innovation. So this, while is a very, has been a very challenging time for the district, is also a really great time to think about what the future is going to look like. And planning together, staff and the board and others helps prepare student staff and parents for what that future is going to look like. The vision and principles in this document are going to act as the district's compass. And it's going to help board and staff to navigate new territory and your routine decision-making. And it's going to, this document is going to help you hopefully succinctly communicate what your collective vision is to students, staff, parents, and the community. So just really quickly, what you'll saw in the document is a new vision statement and an updated, more succinct mission statement, which are here on this line. San Luis Coastal prepares each student for a life of purpose. Our students become courageous and creative thinkers. They are college and career-ready, skillful collaborators, and productive contributors to a diverse and rapidly evolving world. And the mission of the district, San Luis Coastal Unified School District educates students through rigorous, relevant, and engaging experiences provided by caring, connected staff with support of the entire community. I think that's really powerful. The group also came up with six core principles. These are the values that the staff and the board are going to hold to when they're evaluating their decisions. All means all, high expectations, respect and integrity, collaboration and civil discourse, culture of care and safety, and continuous improvement. And the document has explanations for each of these six principles. It also contains goals for the next number of years. Both district-wide goals and goals by grade span. So the district-wide goals are divided into four categories: academic excellence, student wellness, staff and family support, and facilities. And then each grade span has a set of goals that are specifically focused on that age range. And again, the grade spans that we discussed were preschool through third, fourth through sixth, middle school, and high school. So what do you do with this plan once you've created it and vote on it? Well, we're going to implement it. And so this vision and core principles are going to be driving how you do your decision-making and how you manage the schools. And the goals in this strategic document are going to be interwoven into your current and future operational plans. Staff are going to take these and put them into these plans to have them actually make change on the ground. And then evaluation. You are, you as a district are constantly evaluating how you're doing as an entity and as a group. And the administration will evaluate progress using multiple reliable measures and make changes when necessary. When tracking progress on this specific document, we are suggesting that the board and the superintendent evaluate that process in reaching the goals through your already existing biannual basis, current superintendent review process. So that process that you do with Dr. Prater every year where he does a self-evaluation in the winter and then you collectively discuss at the end of the school year how things went. That is what we think would be the best approach for the district in evaluating progress on strategic direction. And then we also recommend that the school board and district revisit the direction at least every five years or as needed. So you're going to be evaluating on annual basis, but as you start to implement things and want to add new goals and new benchmarks and new milestones, to be thinking about that at least on a cycle of every five years. So next steps for this document. It's on the agenda for adoption on August 17, so we're going to be talking about it today and getting your feedback, preparing you for that next meeting. Dr. Prater and the district staff will be sharing this with staff across the district, with students, with the community, ensuring that they understand the vision and the impetus for this document. And then, again, as I mentioned, it's going to tie to operational plans as needed. So I am going to stop sharing my screen for a second and just ask if anyone has any questions. And then, again, our agenda for today is to talk about middle school and high school goals. And then the full draft document. Because as you know, we had our presentation from staff on the 10th of June about middle school and high school. But we have yet had time on our agenda to talk about the goals for specifically for that age range and discuss that. And then we'll go into discussing the full document. So that I can see everybody's faces. Does anybody have any questions about what I just covered on the process that we've done thus far? The intent behind the document, the involvement from board and staff in the creation of it? Eve? And then Eric?
Yes, I was muted. So is this now set in stone? I mean, the vision, can we not add any words to that?
You know, obviously, this is still for the board to be conversing on. You know, in our June 10 meeting, we asked all of you if you could live with that vision and mission statement. And we, I know it was a very tiring day, but we got nods of approval, so I'm hoping that we're pretty darn close right now. Just because everyone seemed to be on the same page at that meeting.
But I, but I also just want to remind the board that, as, as Adrian said, this will be brought back for a formal vote for adoption at one of our August board meetings. Okay?
Yep, so this is your time to give us your final feedback.
I just, it occurred to me as we went over it today that when we say in a rapidly evolving world, that makes it very broad and big. Yes, we want to cover the world, but we also want to start local. Local is important, so I was wondering if something about doing three words in a series like community, nation, and world, thereby not making it such a big elephant, but a bite, a piece by piece, you know, bite of the elephant.
Okay, great. And I, again, we're going to have time to talk about the discussion, excuse me, the, the draft document after we talk about middle school and high school. So I've captured that on paper here, Eve, and Becca's taking notes too. But I'm going to ask that the board hold their comments on, on the wording of the document for that part of our agenda. Right now, I'm just asking if you have any questions about the process we had or how we got here. And Eric, you had a comment or a question you wanted to share?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge you, Adrian and Becca, both of you, for this work. I, I, I know when I approached you, we were smack in the middle of a full year of being locked down. And it seemed counterintuitive to take on such a big task and ask our board to take on more work. But I felt as I looked down the road, I envisioned this, our world reopening and, and moving very quickly, which it is. And so I'm thankful that we got this done. And, you know, when I, when I look at the presentation you just gave to encapsulate it, I just greatly appreciate how you took something complex and made it easy to understand. And so your, your, your work, your, the time that you spent with the board and then the time the board has spent with you as well as staff has been tremendous and during a time when we're all so busy. And I just want to extend my appreciation for this work that you've done to help us get to this point. When you look at the CSBA Governance manuals, it's, it is very clear that school boards and certainly superintendents as secretaries to the board really do have an obligation to put this together. And this has not been easy, but it, it's a good start. And I, and I also want to acknowledge something to the whole board and to everyone who's listening today, that this is a, a dynamic document that we will continue to massage this and work with it throughout the year. And, and as we move through the, the way we are as a, as an organization, we're constantly seeking input and feedback. So I envision us revisiting this on an annual basis and making refinements or tweaks, if you will, along the way so that it more accurately reflects what we're about and where we're going. So I just believe this is a great start and it'll serve as a wonderful foundation for our district and broader organization in the years to come. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. And, you know, as I like to tell organizations, your strategic plan is a living document. It's a, that is the best way for it to serve you. It, it needs to serve you. And so it shouldn't, if it's not serving you, then we should change it. Any other thoughts or questions that you want to share? Okay, then we will move on to discussing middle school and high school goals. So I, I know it's, it feels like the, the last month has been very long because it's summer break. But we did get a presentation from staff on June 10 about their thoughts on middle school and high school. And I'm going to reshare my screen again. They had some thoughts about both grade spans. I think, let's talk about middle school first and then we'll talk about high school, if that works for everyone. And I'm just, ah, there we go. Trying to make sure I can see all of you while I'm sharing my screen. So we asked for everyone's input in June so that we could feed it into the overall document. What you see on your screen right now are the goals that staff and board, what we heard in our initial conversations with the board on June 10 and also other input from staff for this specific grade span. You'll remember that for middle school, they are currently in a process right now to be vision, visioning for just the middle school and what they want that to look like going forward. So you see that encapsulated in the statements here. What did people think when they took this in? Does anyone have any questions for staff? Mark?
Yeah, so I, some of this I remember, some of it, for some reason, seems a little different or new. So when we look at the first bullet and we are prepared to plan to, for middle school reform linked to the Schools to Watch program. I, I went and looked at the Schools to Watch websites and the criteria, and I just want to be sure that we're, that we're working towards fulfilling the needs of our students and not fulfilling the needs of some program that hands out some award. And so I just, just need to hear a little bit from staff about any differences that we're, what that we're doing or any time that we're spending really. And I know there's been a lot of time spent. I apologize and I appreciate that. But what are we working for? Schools to Watch or for the kids in the district and programs that we know they need?
So I think I'll ask Eric to answer this. You know, this is the framework that they've chosen to use. And I think he has a pretty good rationale about why they're using this framework as they look to make changes for the middle school. So Eric?
Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Bachman, I just want to say I appreciate the question because it's a super important question. The purpose of, of naming Schools to Watch in this document is because it is the premier, undoubtedly, the, the best research-based, comprehensive middle school document in, in the country. And the, where it came from, it actually evolved out of, out of the, the, the number of states in the nation where the top educators, of middle school educators got together, including California. And they began to do research around all their seminal documents around what researchers saw in middle grades education as being essential. And the Schools to Watch program came out from that. And the rubric and the criteria that's used in the Schools to Watch program is universal. It, it isn't something that's a cookie cutter, but it really talks about how do you meet the needs of all students in your school, in the middle grades in particular. And they talk about these criteria within that rubric that if you follow those and if you create a process, an inclusive process around that, those documents and the criteria specifically, then we know as a district that our educators and our, our district is really looking out for the systems, the structures, the social, emotional needs, academic needs of our adolescent kids. There's nothing like it in the, in the country that can stand up to this. And it's hard. It's very difficult. And as you know, Los Osos Middle School pursued that several years ago. And they are well on their way. It's a continuous improvement model. And by the way, it's not an award-based program. There are honors that are bestowed upon districts that, that earn that particular moniker of Schools to Watch. Los Osos Middle School is one of them. And, and the conversations that come out of that are, are conversations around continuous improvement. And so there's never an endpoint. It's not like a distinguished school award where you, your students score at a certain level. And as a result of those scores, they earn this award. That's not what this is. And so I'm com, I'm absolutely confident because I've done it myself as a former principal. I'm confident that if we follow this, this model, the Schools to Watch model, which has been adopted by the state of California, California Department of Education and the National Department of Education there. And I think we're up to 40 states, 48, 45 states that have adopted this program as the premier middle school program to use as a continuous improvement model. And that's why I put it in here because it's research-based. The best, the best thinking has gone into this and continues to go into it. And, and we have Scott Steele, who is the CEO or president of the Schools to Watch, actually the California League of Schools president and Schools to Watch CEO, is helping us guide our district through this process. So I know when I look at our vision, mission, and guiding principles, and I know that this is consistent with our core values as a district and as a community. If we can really keep our eyes on this, I'll know that it's, that our kids are going to benefit from it. So that's why it's in here the way it is. Very, very difficult to not just earn this honor, but to maintain it. And our, it requires buy-in from teachers, the community, and districts to make this happen. Yes, Mr. Bachman?
So I did look at the criteria. It was a while ago, and I apologize if I, if I missed stuff. But when we go down in the font, you know, the lower bullet points, we're specific, specifically calling out Avid. And I'm wondering, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate that. I, I'm really glad that we're going broader. And it actually was one of my comments in the final document that it seemed like we weren't. So I didn't see Avid specifically called out. I didn't see Bridges programs called out, and I didn't see the culminating overnight. So did I miss those? Because I'm almost happy that I didn't find them. Because this really goes to my question of our action, which is, you know, what are we going to do specifically that we know works in our community?
Yeah, so the Schools to Watch rubric that, that the staff would follow, it doesn't speak specifically to Avid or overnight camping experiences or dual immersion or bridge programs in mathematics. However, what they do talk about is academic excellence, cultural responsiveness. They talk about social, emotional learning needs and they, they provide specific opportunities for districts to make that a unique response. So Avid might work in some districts. It may not work in all districts. So it gives a wide berth for individual, so Laguna Middle School will look different than Los Osos Middle School in terms of their responsiveness to this pro, or to this programmatic model. So I would say to you that there's, there's lots of room for individualizing a response to this type of thing. So, yes?
Thanks for that. So I guess what I'm hearing then is the stuff that the board seemed to stress in our early, you know, the vision, mission, before we got to the specific goals and objectives was SEL. So, so by putting this Schools to Watch in, we're sort of covering a lot of the stuff that I kind of feel might have ended up being bullet points. And so maybe we're just saving bullet points. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I appreciate the description.
Yeah, I think you got it. Yeah, this is, I'm really excited about this effort. I'm really excited our board is talking about it because oftentimes, middle school programs and middle school education is lumped together in this thing called secondary. And districts oftentimes treat their middle schools like many high schools. And it's a big giant mistake to do that. And I feel that we're somehow in the And I feel that we're somehow in the middle of that. And I would like to unify our middle school philosophy and, and use the schools to watch rubric, which is universal and research-based. It's incredible, like I said. And use that as a, as a framework for us to, as a district to adhere to. And I can promise you, if we do that, then you're going to see all these other things evolve out of middle school that will only serve to support high school and our, and our objectives there. So I'm setting a stage for a five-year plan so that we can really build towards the things we currently do and that we love and improve the things that we need to improve upon that align with our high school objectives and the broader vision, mission and guiding principles in the, in the district. That's kind of what I'm attempting to do here.
Yeah, and I would just add to remind the board that, you know, staff is right in the middle of this visioning process for middle school. So once they complete that in the summer of 2022, you'll probably see a lot more concrete thoughts and goals being suggested by them that would touch on perhaps social emotional learning and those types of things from middle school. But at this point, it's a little bit premature because we want to see where those conversations go.
And I just want to add that I think these are, these are the kinds of goals that are appropriate for the school board to be looking at. These are the 30,000-foot goals that, that we need to give handoff to the staff so that the staff can implement the more fine-grained things that we're talking about here.
Eric and then Eve?
I'm going to hand that off to Eve first and then I'd like to say my final thoughts. Eve?
Thank you. Do we have a link to the rubric of the schools to watch or have we been instructed? I mean, I'm relatively new here, so instructed to look at the program so we know what we, the board are talking about? I would want to be knowledgeable.
Yeah, yeah, we, I want to say that I have shared this before, but, but I will do that again to make sure you have it. It's easy to get to and I will make sure I put that in this week's Friday update. It's, you'll, I think you'll find it quite interesting and comprehensive. And, and I'll make sure you get that Eve. Super important. And
So Eric, did you want to say something? And then Evelyn, I think had a question.
Yeah, no, Evelyn, go right ahead.
Well, Mark's question made me think about something and part of it is, have you seen Eric a shift in, you know, the, the program's been around for a long time? Have you seen a shift in kind of the rubrics or the focus that's kind of driving, you know, I mean, because, because as you said, it's dynamic. So what kind of trends or pushing on that? Just, I'm just curious, like, because Mark made me kind of think of that and I don't know. Because you've been involved with the program a long time, but there has to be some shifts that are changing within the nation about this or what do you think?
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't see any, they've, they've changed over the years. Over the years, they've changed some of the language, but not substantially, not, there's nothing really substantive about the changes they've made because they've created a really excellent umbrella for how to best educate and care for adolescent kids. And so it's like I said, it's a universally utilized framework for how to best care for middle grades kids. Now, I can do a compare and contrast, but you know, what I, what I really wanted to say more than anything today is that once you look at the schools to watch rubric, you'll begin to see that it's rich. It's, not only is it rich, but each of the elements within the framework or within the rubric, you could spend an entire year on. So it's, it is robust. It's not something that is easy to do, which is why many schools don't do it. Because it requires a high level of collaboration and buy-in. Now, I want to add one thing to this and this is important to understand. And I spoke to John Calandro and Carl Bloom about this as well. It is essential in this rubric that you get buy-in and input from students and parents in the community. So you have to have parent feedback in this, in this conversation, not just teachers and not just classified admin. This is not a, a one and done kind of deal. This is a very, the, the, the bar is held high in terms of creating buy-in and input and validating the, the feedback from students, from parents and staff. We started with a small group of staff and admin, but, but that was only to get this thing started. But that's why we're taking, it says summer of 2022, because all of next year, we're going to start building a parent cohort and a student cohort utilizing probably the Student Senate and the California Healthy Kids Survey data, Youth Truth Survey data to really start formulating and refining these, these programmatic objectives. Mr. Buckman?
Yeah, so as, as, you know, as we talk about this step then during the summer, I don't know about my fellow board members, but throughout our document, throughout the vision, throughout the strategic plan, it's called out numerous times about parent involvement, parent involvement. So I've had a concern since the beginning because it looked like it was only staff. I'm hearing now a plan for the summer in, in involvement. Is there some way in this broad view that we can inject as a board, or at least I'd like to see if the board would agree with me, that statement that you just made about we're going, the next step or the board, or even the board continues to have an interest in, in parent and student involvement. And I also appreciate the California Healthy Kids Survey and the LCAP process. But not all parents participated in that. So just from my perspective personally, I'd like to see some broader outreach to the, to the, to the parents. I, you know, I don't know what that looks like. But this other step, this other, the steps that you've mentioned are pretty small group of folks in my, in my memory.
Yeah, Mark, and the reason we're pushing the, the reform product to the summer of 2022 is that all of next year, all of next year, we're building those outreach efforts with parents, students and staff to create that accordion process that we know works and we know is important. So you'll see that. And you know, this, these middle school goals, you can see just in that first bullet, the schools to watch rubric or the schools to watch process, when they come out and observe your school and that study your school, which is what they do. The first thing they ask is talk us, talk, talk to us about how you engaged your key stakeholders. And so what you see on the screen right now is the beginning. What you're going to see next year is a much more comprehensive view of that engagement. Because that's part of the process and, and it's essential. And Mark, you've known that and you've been an advocate for that. So we can put it in this document, but it's, it's embedded in that first bullet. When you start looking at the schools to watch program, that's an essential pillar is creating that key stakeholder buy-in. So, yeah, I know there's a lot in this, but I just, I urge all of you to take a, take a look at it. And you'll see what I'm talking about when you look at it.
I think maybe Chris had a comment and Evelyn?
Yeah, I took to Mark's question, I'm looking at the proposed strategic document that we'll be talking about a little bit later. And I believe that that's covered in the core principles and values with both, it looks like respect and integrity, continuous improvement. There was something else, staff and family support, those kinds of things. So I do know that although it may not be showing up in this document, it is throughout actually the larger, the larger goals and core principles that we'll be talking about a little bit later.
Yeah, Chris, I appreciate that and I did recognize that. I'm looking, I'm going to go, if, if we want, I'll wait till later, but.
Yeah, let's wait till later, Mark. And, and, but just very quickly, the second bullet of the staff and family support, it's a district-wide goal on page six, talks about communicating with parents and how you create that relationship. And then the core principles do also talk about that. And then as we mentioned, the document, staff, as they were putting together their input for this document, they were using, they were taking into consideration everything that they've heard the last couple of years from parents and students and staff and that after this document is complete, they'll be going out and sharing this with those groups and inevitably getting feedback from them through that process that the board and staff can evaluate next year.
I, I ensure that will happen. Yep.
Evelyn and then Rick, did you want to add something or? No, okay, Evelyn?
Um, I don't, as I was reading this doc, document for middle school goals and it relates to kind of what Chris is saying about, you know, the 30,000 views. So I don't know if this is appropriate, but as I was reading, you know, the document and I see the beginning words of create, increase, provide, provide, create, evaluate. I was wondering, because it's, it gets to, you know, inevitably the board's responsibility, but it doesn't come into this. When we talk about provide continuing professional evaluate, isn't part of the middle school goals in this for the middle school staff and programs to include the wording of provide and evaluate or monitor? You know, and the same with, you know, provide comprehensive dual immersion opportunity, provide and monitor. It just, I mean, not that, but it's, it's that issue of, you know, I, you know, we have the word down at the bottom, evaluate, but I don't see that in, you know, create bridge programs, create and monitor so that because it's a dynamic process. It just seems like that would be kind of an appropriate guardrail that we can look to, to kind of keep us on track. I don't know. That's, that's kind of what struck me. So.
So Evelyn, I really appreciate that. And I, I, I want you to know, one of the primary themes within schools to watch is progress monitoring, accountability, tracking systems and evaluating the data to, to see whether what you're doing is working through multiple modalities, not just survey data, but qualitative and quantitative analyses. And, and again, I can't urge state this enough. It's, it's really a high bar to do well. And, and so what you're, what you're really seeing here is in these bullets consistently ensuring that we have evaluate and monitor or progress monitor, ongoing monitoring of, of whether or not what we're doing is working. And we have, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. And I think only Eric, and you know, I defer to the board, but it's kind of goes in line with kind of what you've been saying and, and kind of what the schools to watch of that ongoing system approach. So just for me, as I was reading that, it just struck me that those were, you know, words that, you know, might, as staff and other people are looking that, you know, in their mind, it's not just about the providing. It's also that kind of monitoring of ourselves or, you know, of, of what is going on or evaluating. So however, again, I'm just one person, but it's just something that just kind of struck me as I was listening to you and so.
Well, I saw this one other head nodding. We, we can go through the document and with that lens and, and add some language to ensure that when we're saying we're going to provide or create something that we're also going to evaluate or monitor it. How does the rest of the board feel about that? Is that something you'd like us to do before you see it again?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, the, so we have a measuring success section of the document. I'm wondering if it could be there just because, you know, for succinctness and not so that we don't see monitor under every single bullet? Would it work to roll it into that section more clearly?
There is, there, there, there is one. It's on page. Anyway, there is, there is one that's titled measuring success. But it really, it uses state mandated measurements. It talks more about outside measurements rather than, I don't know what we call them with students. We, there's a lot in here about evaluating students and measuring progress and I'm not going to, I did, I agree with Evelyn. Sometimes we have specific dates and sometimes we have, we, we don't. And I'm just, I don't disagree in them. I don't know. There is, there is a paragraph or section on measuring success. Maybe that's where we beef it up.
Happy to do that. Ellen has a thought and Chris?
I have, I have just two brief ones. I think that, that one thing might be a word if we're, is outcomes, measurable outcomes. And another, another thing when I was thinking about, when I thought about schools to watch, I've said on WASP committees at the elementary, middle, high school and university levels. And with regard to schools to watch, my interpretation, and this is just my personal interpretation, rolling it into my experience on WASP committees, is that it is like, it's like another layer of a WASP. I mean, the WASP is very, is fairly comprehensive and detailed. And this just is more granular, gets into the expectations seem to follow many of the expectations and measurable outcomes that WASP requires, but in an even more detailed manner. So that's, that's an equation I made in my own mind when I was involved, you know, just as a trustee and went to a few meetings for the schools to watch for Los Osos Middle School. And I don't know if that helps at all. But that's just my own interpretation of it.
Um, I think Chris had a thought and then Mark.
Yeah. And Ellen, that's exactly what I was thinking is, is this, this is a more granular version of WASP. And as well as, I think they have to re-up every couple of years, don't do they not, Eric? I know that Los Osos Middle School just went through that process again of being reevaluated and then being able to continue to call themselves a school to watch. We just did that, I believe in May, something like that.
Yeah, it's, it's called redesignation and you have to go through a pretty robust process with your staff and community. And it's true what Ellen said. It's, I think it's WASP on steroids. And it's really good stuff and I'm excited for it.
I, I know we're getting into sort of mixing the main document and these goals, but I think it's, I don't think it's, I think it's not a bad place to do that. So one of the comments I had later on is maybe we need footnotes or some kind of reference sheet. There's been a lot of discussions just based on those three, three words, schools to watch. And, and so maybe there's a place for that definition. In our measuring success section that's in the final document, it only talks about measuring student success. And so maybe I agree that there may be another place back up and that may be where we put it, but there needs to be a student and district measurement of success. And that may be the place to put it. Thank you.
Sure. And yeah, that was kind of a catch-all section. You're talking about, we were talking about student, measuring student success, but also tracking the success of this particular document. So we can absolutely beef up some language there to capture that. Does everyone feel like that's a good place to do that? To encapsulate tracking and evaluating how each one of these goals as it's being implemented works for the district? Evelyn, I'm looking at you because I know you wanted to see it in each individual goal statement.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess I would, you know, we, just for me, I just think it's, it's, it's important, you know, we're, we're charged with, you know, the heavy responsibility of, of financing all of these things. So I think it's, you know, in my mind, it's always, you know, a good thing to be thinking of, not just providing, but how we're monitoring, you know, programs and things like that, just in the back of my mind. So when, you know, what I worry about is somebody looks at this document. Just in the back of my mind. So when, you know, what I worry about is somebody looks at this document, oh, we'll provide, and they kind of tick off. Over provide, provide, create. But in the back of my mind, you know, what is that, you know, that other piece that, you know, really. Is, you know, comes down to, you know, where we allocate funding and money and things like that. So which is kind of our duty. So that's why I'm a little bit hesitant to kind of put it somewhere else. I mean, I agree, but if we could also encourage some language within this. But it's only, you know, again, I'm just speaking as one person, just to put that, just because I get a little nervous. When I look at something that's, you know, a little bit. In a document such as this manner.
And so Becca and I could work with staff to do a kind of a yes and. So we can relook at these goals and see which ones really feel like there needs to be some additional evaluation in that specific language. But then also include more of a more beefy conversation of that in the measuring success section. So if there is a goal statement that we don't add that word to, that it's captured there. Chris and then Eric.
And and one other thing that I would just bring the board back to, when we started this conversation, one of, one of the. Evaluation methods we talked about really was the evaluation of Dr. Prater. And how we operationalize these goals and objectives into his, you know, his twice yearly evaluation with us. So I think that we, we, we have started that conversation. And one of the critical questions for the board is how do we, again, how do we operationalize that into Eric's evaluation? Eric, do you want to talk a little bit about that and maybe what your thoughts are on that? Because it really comes back to you because that's ultimately the board's responsibility is to, is to provide you with an evaluation.
So Eric and then Eve and then Mark.
Yeah, I just really want, I, Chris, I, I certainly, as you all know, what I do is I. I. Look at these objectives, these goals, and then I fold them into my, my master planning calendar. So that when it's time to reflect on them, I'm able to address each of them throughout the year. And so, yeah, I could certainly see how that could, could fold into my eval and reflections. I think because this isn't going to be, this next year is about process. It's about getting engagement, getting people to weigh in on these things. We have one middle school who's already a two-time schools to watch school. One's earning it, one's being re-designated, and we have another middle school who's going to apply for that and start that process. And and to get to Evelyn's point, I think, and to Adrian, I, and Becca, I would say. A really good way to capture what it is I'm hearing from Mrs. Frame. Is to do a declarative statement at the top of this with a colon. And then underneath it, you can maintain, you can maintain the integrity of some of these bullets. But the, the, the declaration from the board would be, you know, understanding that. That any program reform effort requires ongoing progress monitoring. Is essential. The following goals will, will include. You know, ongoing and frequent progress monitoring. Colon, and then you add in these things. And I think, I think we could nuance it that way. So that you're not adding the same language to every bullet. Does that make sense?
Eve had a thought and then Mark.
I wanted to lend support to the point that Mrs. Frame brought up and others have been discussing that. If my understanding is that we, we need to be specific in our measurements. About what is being accomplished by these various programs, such as one of them is an overnight outdoor experience. How to measure that might come under SEL measurements, not sure exactly how it would be done. But yes, I'm for having, you know, formative and or assumptive analyses. Or rather assessments is what I meant to say for, for each one. And it may be handled just the way you suggested, beef it up a little and, and call out each one somehow with a measurement.
Mark.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. You, you brought up the, the concept. And so I just want to address it, the biannual review of the superintendent. I understand the need for that. We have many programs that we get an annual update on that are public and we, we hold. I, 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 I'd like to have a more robust discussion about where the, where this, where the updates get discussed. I, I, my sense is it needs, it's going to need a board discussion. And and it's going to need some presentations from staff. So I'd like to make sure we discuss that later. And I'm really glad you brought it up, Chris. Thanks.
Mark, please remind me if I forget to, to, when we're talking about the full document.
Oh, you know, I will.
Well, yeah, we should visit that in that conversation. Other thoughts about middle school? We, we still want to talk about high school this morning and then the full document. Okay, and just, yeah, and Eve, I have a slide too with some input that I got from board members before this meeting too. Then I'm going to share, I think I'm going to share the high school slides and then that slide.
I can wait then.
Okay, potentially, because there might, yeah. Um, okay, so I'm going to move to high school. There we go. We see high school. So these were the. Goals for high school that we pulled out of our very brief conversation from June tenth. As well as staff input from their presentation and their review of the document. So modernizing the academic curricula. Expanding college and career pathway opportunities at the comprehensive high schools, that's Morro Bay and San Luis. And career technical education opportunities at Pacific Beach. That include connections to jobs, internships and include culminating projects with an emphasis on non-technical workplace skills. Can, it's, there's a lot in that one bullet. Continue to evaluate opportunities to assist students in developing social emotional learning and non-technical skills. In addition to academics in preparation for graduation. Continue to expand course offerings in arts and sciences and, and look for ways to integrate subjects. In order to increase relevance in the instruction. And then pursue top one hundred high schools in America as determined by US News World Report for Morro Bay and Slow. And pursue top state honors for Pacific Beach. So this was what was in the document that we sent to you. Before this meeting, we did get some initial input from board members. Uh, and so I'm just going to share that really quickly and then I'll probably pop back to the high school screen so you guys can see. What's in the document. So additional board input we got at middle and high, though, I waited to talk about this because I feel like a number of them are high school. And that is ensuring that there is a comprehensive civics education for secondary students. Ensuring financial skills are taught in high school in advance of graduation. Providing for more opportunities for ESL specific courses for all ages. So that one was not just specifically middle school and high school, but we did get that comment in this last round of board input. And ensure courses are preparing students for a rapidly changing world. So just examples of what the board member meant by rapidly changing was, you know. Potential very dramatic shifts in industry or climate shifts or work, changes in workplaces that we're seeing right now. The world is very dynamic at the, at this current time. And so making sure that our graduates are prepared to, to. Be in that realm. So that's what we heard. Again, I'm just going to jump back to this slide first.
Adrian.
Yes.
Could I interject? And maybe Dr. Prater, you can answer this. You know, in looking at the middle school and the high schools. I struck, are we looking at them as discreet or on a, or is there that continuum bridge? That I should, and that interface that I should be looking for and looking at, you know? Am I clear?
Yes, I think I understand what you're asking. Part of the, I really, I'm, I'm not paid by schools to watch, just so everyone knows this. I am not, I am not a consultant or paid on any way, shape or form. I'm just a big fan. But what I want to say about schools to watch at the middle level is that they talk very intentionally about. Transition periods from elementary to middle and from middle to high. In fact, the four-year plan that we've developed in our district came from my direct experience. With schools to watch when I was a principal. As our staff was working through that transition discussion about what middle school kids need. Prior to going to high school. And they talked about at length in that rubric about how those transition. Components are important programmatically and, and technically. So when I, to answer your question, what's on my mind here is, is. That continuum from elementary to middle, from middle to high. Is really, really important that we look at carefully. And so in, in, with respect to this conversation about high school. I feel that what you see in these bullets lend themselves. Lend themselves pretty well, especially when you look at the, the first bullet. And the third bullet. And the fourth bullet, those, those are, you know, direct like. Transition discussions, like if high schools develop those programs or those opportunities. Really intentionally, then it leads to what the middle school programs need to really hone in and focus on. Like integrated instruction, developing the arts and the sciences, really looking at curriculum. That gets kids excited about the things they need and have opportunities for when they get to high school. So that's kind of my thought on that. I hope, I'm not sure if I answered it clearly, but it's embedded in it. Yes.
And, and, and I, I know I'm, I'm sort of interrupting here, but couldn't the ones that you just talked about, number one, three and four? It looked like they came straight out of, out of, out of our student senate and, you know.
That's right.
Out of, out of the survey that we, that we've done with the students, right?
They, they surely do.
Who would ask, the students are asking for relevance and engagement and social emotional skills and things like that. I mean, these are, these are things clearly the students are asking for.
Yes.
Um, really quickly, before Mark and then Evelyn, I just wanted to add, I think, you know, when we started this process with Dr. Prater. We wanted to have these conversations on a grade span level because we knew that there were things unique to different grade spans. That we didn't want to get lost in a more broader conversation of just on secondary. But clearly you are going to be thinking about how you're transitioning through these grade spans and how middle school is connected to high school. And how elementary school is connected to middle school. So I guess I would encourage you, Evelyn, to try and do both at the same time. Like what is really important that you should be thinking about just for the high school kids, but also kind of continually, continuously thinking about. The fact that middle school students become high school students, right? So what is that, what is going to be helping that transition into high school? What's that transition out of high school? And what are the really key, important things to be thinking about kids when they're in high school? Mark and then Evelyn.
Thanks. So I, one of the questions I had is I want to review this is, I, I get a, I, I just, I need help understanding what non-technical. Means in, in the couple of places where it shows up here. For example, bullet three.
And two.
So if staff doesn't want to jump in on that, I would say my interpretation is. Looking at collaboration skills, looking at social emotional learning skills, those kinds of skills. Eric or Rick, do you want to, or Diane, do you want to add to that?
I think, I think you're right on, Adrian. Those are like soft skills, interpersonal relationship skills, civil dialogue, things like that.
Well, because, you know, these, these were not my words, so I'm not sure where they came from. But and I can defer to Leslie or Diane. But my intent, my thinking about this is I'm listening to the, the. The workplace feedback. So looking at industry leaders and the feedback that we're hearing from them in what they're looking for in, in employees. So we're thinking about how kid, how young people from our district are being hired into industry. And what our industry leaders are saying they're looking for. To get to what Rick said, they're looking for, they're looking for people who can collaborate, who have high levels of social intelligence. That can have empathy yet hold their ground. So it's that, which is why those core, that core value document is important. Because in there, it talks about collaboration and civil engagement or civil dialogue. Because that's what we're hearing industry leaders saying, that they're not looking for someone who knows how to. Have specific technical skills as much as they're looking for someone that they can train up. And they can become a solid employee and team member. So I think that's where that's probably coming from.
So I guess, I, I appreciate that now that I've heard it. Like, I, I'm just, I'm just afraid in, in a year or two years or five years, and who knows what happens to the board? That that kind of thought will be lost, especially when we're looking at, when, when we bring it to parents and to students. So again, I don't know if it's a footnote or there's a way to expand this somewhere else. Because I had a totally different visceral reaction to it. I don't know if staff would be okay with non-academic skills, if the staff were rather than a negative, it would be. A social emotional learning and, and I don't know, so community school, community skills, social schools, skills. But.
Think we can also explore with staff, putting in a, a short definition section, if that would be useful for the document.
Yeah, and I agree, I actually agree with Mark. I, I looked at the non-technical workplace skills myself and had to pause. And, and ask myself, what, what is it that they're referring to there? And I, I think we can probably find another term. That better equates it to what it, it's, it is. And, and maybe, maybe work with our team to, to, to. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's interpersonal, it's interpersonal skills, you know, is what I think I'm hearing. It's well documented in our, in our work with industry leaders that they're looking for people that can, that can be part of a team. And add value to the team. And so that's because there's, they have their own training programs for the technical aspects of that work. So maybe that's something we can, can work on tweaking word wise.
I, I, I would also remind people that these are the sort, that these are, that these are also discussed in the Common Core standards. When we talk about collaboration skills, we talk about ability for people to clearly communicate with each other. Those kinds of things I believe are addressed in, in the whole idea of Common Core. So we're already kind of there with this. I think that what you're talking about is just a, a different, different terminology to describe what we're already doing. And what we're attempting to do and what, what the expectation is that we will be doing.
Listen, I appreciate, and I appreciate that thought, but this is, this, these are our mission and vision. These are staff's goals and I, even I'm not, even I didn't go to Common Core on this one. So I, I just feel like we need to spell things, spell things out a little more. And, and towards Evelyn's comment on grade span, I think what, Evelyn, help me if I'm wrong. But I think what Ellen was, Evelyn may have been looking for was some statement in here where we have. Somewhere that says that these, these are all linked. And again, you know, if a board member has that question, I, I just, I'm going to assume some people in the public are going to have it. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
So Diane, are you, are you there by chance?
I am right here.
And what, what, what's your take on what Mr. Buckman, Mr. Unger are talking about here in the, the term non-technical? Could that, could that be replaced with interpersonal? Could that, could that be replaced with interpersonal workplace skills?
I, I'd like to have an opportunity to um look a little bit deeper into it, but I do agree with the way both you, Eric and Rick described this. I do think that the collaboration, the teamwork, I think that that's what we're looking at it in non-technical. And then, you know, is the question, you know, I think the question is, how do you succinctly describe that broad area of skills that we want our kids to have, so that the public will understand as Mr. Buckman is saying. So so give me a couple of days to work with some people and I'll see if we can come up with some options for the board.
Excellent. Thank you, Diane. And Mark, I appreciate that catch. I think you're spot on.
Uh, I think Evelyn, did you, excuse me, Eve, did you have your hand up?
I I did. Um. This fits in, I believe, to the present current conversation we're having. The bullet point number four uh having to do with relevance, I remember from the LCAP survey, from staff, students, community, parents, et cetera, that they had asked for relevance. And I believe relevance, as we're discussing it now, can include a number of different things. The first thing that comes to mind by that is what we've been hearing from um re- uh relevance of what's happening in the community, the nation and the world regarding uh forces uh that are opposing forces and so forth. And how to uh discuss that in a balanced way uh would be to me foremost in um having them discuss a relevance and through doing so, developing their interpersonal skills, being able to talk about both sides of things in a passionate way, but it the with the ability to listen to the other side and engage in civic discourse, which we've already included here. So that would be one thing that's relevant that I believe that the parents and community are asking for. But the other one would be the um financial abilities, money being so important to know how to take command of as an adult and handle it responsibly. I'm just going to return to that other page that you showed and uh Mark, Mr. Buckman and I brought, both brought up financial education at the uh retreat and you know, perhaps that's a separate agenda than this, but I haven't seen that included until the additional board input. So I'm saying that would be something relevant. And then there's a third thing I have, that's enough probably for right now. I'll bring up the third thing later. So just what I'm saying is an ethnic studies balance whereby kids and and staff can handle both sides of issues. Because it is, we do have a policy saying controversial issues, it's a six one four four that teachers are inspected to ensure all sides of a controversial issue are impartially presented and so forth, and it goes on. And it's very relevant, I think, for the kinds of discussions. Um, I I was on National Education Association website, California Teacher Association website. I've been a member for twenty-five years of both of those organizations, and they're very much pushing um ethnic studies. Uh, organization at the community, you know, activate people and get them going. So we need to make sure that it's being, because I know the teachers are getting this anyway, no matter what we decide, they're going to be getting it from their unions about what is wanted to be taught as relevant. So I'm, I'm, I'm bringing up balance in regard to uh ethnic studies, I'm bringing it up. And then also the financial education as being extremely, two extremely important things.
So um A- Adrian, I need to, I need to to circle back for a second, ask you a question. So we're getting lots of suggestions from board members right now and modifications to make to this. Um, how are you, how can we manage uh to make sure that that all board members are in agreement with these before they're being brought back? Or what, what are you thinking about, about getting agreement on some of these ideas right now? Um, and then as we bring them forward, rather than just making sure that, do you see what I'm saying?
So what I wanted to do was, while I was on this, um, sorry, I'm cannot get my screen to go back. There we go. When I was on this page, I wanted to see, get thoughts and feedback on this and a kind of a general agreement with this that's already in the document. Then I was going to move to what we heard um just the last couple of weeks and try and get a thoughts on this page here and whether we want to include anything from this into the document. Um, and then you will get another version. I would, I think we'll do it in track changes and clean versions, so you can see what changes we made based on the conversations we had today, and this would be to these specific goals, but then also some of the broader conversations we've had about adding um language to the overall document. Does that sound like an okay approach to everyone?
Um.
And then Ellen, you're muted.
So I have a couple of questions. One, I agree with Chris. It it started sounding to me like we were or I was concerned that we were just, you know, as we heard comments, just adopting them into the document without really knowing if everyone on the board was in agreement and, you know, some I am, others I'm not and um uh and again, feeling, you know, my concern is that we tend to start up here and then as we look at things more closely, we gradually work our way down until here we are on the ground with everyone and and that concerns me. And then my last question is, how are we going to know when we're done? I mean, we could do this forever. And I, I am really concerned about us, again, getting too involved in curricular matters that are not the concern of the board. Um, delving too deeply into what a course should look like or what it should include or you know, that that I have really serious concerns about that.
So y- you see that we, and the, on the agenda, we had it in two parts, right? We had conversation about middle school and high school and then the full document, and that was because um staff and Becca and I felt like you had the opportunity as a group to have discussion about each other grade span, and we didn't want middle school and high school to not have that opportunity, just because this happens to be our last day that we're um doing the work. So you're seeing us give you a little bit more leeway, talking about middle school and high school. Um, but I I am going to ask the group, when we're talking about the document as a whole, to really, you know, hold comments to things that are, are things that are the most concerning to you. And so what we can do is list out what we've heard so far um as potential changes overall for the document when we get to that agenda item and then get, you know, then thumbs up, thumbs down about putting that in track changes in the document, that's going to come back to you for the August vote. Does that sound like it fits with your general process that you use for other items? Chris and Ellen.
Uh Ellen, what do you think?
I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to see the input because there are, you know, I do have the sense that you know, we're just sort of adding more and more and more. And to me, it seems this should be a really concise document with maybe references to other things to back it up, but you know, it
Yeah. Yeah, I I I think from, from my, from where I sit, hopefully, I'm trying to sit at the thirty thousand foot level. How can we make things broad enough so that the staff can do their work with the idea that then they'll be able to report back to us the metrics uh to show, to demonstrate progress or not on the specific goals that we've asked them to move forward with? Does that make sense?
Yes. Okay, uh Evelyn and then Mark.
Yeah, this is more um not about the actual in- input of the document, it's, it's when you push it out to us, Adrian. So I'm only speaking to me, if you could push it out in kind of a a trifold where we're looking at, you know, um elementary, then middle school and it's side by side. I don't really, you know, need to, you know, other than what I mentioned about, you know, monitoring or what, you know, Dr. Prater said that, that one thing. It's just for me, the, just seeing it across, you know, the uh, it's just, it's just, it's just for me, but that could be just me when I'm, when you're pushing it out, that would just be helpful for me. That's all.
Mark.
Yeah, so Chris, I appreciate the the thought about thirty thousand, and I think the the ultimate document will be that document um at thirty thousand feet. I, I feel at least personally as one board member, I I need to sometimes get down a little bit and 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 ask things like, what does that mean? Um, and that may lead to a discussion that's not this, you know, thirty thousand feet and um I I I'm, I'm comfortable with it. Um, and I'm not asking for stuff to be put in at this point. I think I'm hearing a lot of good discussion by people, but I I I'm really hearing Becca and Adrian say, I'll capture that and and we'll go, you know, we'll work on it. So I I haven't heard anybody ask for anything to be added at this point. Um, so one, just to, just to recap, I I I appreciate the final document will be thirty thousand feet. I don't feel this discussion needs to be thirty thousand feet. And the only thing I'm hearing is discussion and nobody's saying, I want that in. Um, so I just need to clarify what I heard you say.
Yeah, there's one or two things that that I I would propose to the group that I've heard that seemed like there was some general agreement. Um, and and it's on, you know, changes for the whole document, not necessarily an addition of a goal. So I will list them out for you um when we talk about the whole document, if that works, since we're still, I think we'd like to wrap up our conversation about middle school and high school goals.
So I I mean, I'm, I'm just, i- if you're asking for specific input on the document, um, I think the, if you, if you go back to the high school document, um, I think there isn't, I think there is necessity to change the non-technical to something else. I I think that's that would help clarify this document. Um, if we move to the other suggested, to the other suggested goals that board members wanted to encourage, I'm just gonna, I'll share how I feel about them. Can you pull, can you go forward to those and then I guess we can hear from other board members? Um, I am absolutely in favor of adding an inch, that we ensure comprehensive civics education for secondary students. And in fact, I I think we should ensure comprehensive, you know, civics education for all of our students. Um, you know, I mean, i- it, we're, we're, we're supposed to be doing, for example, and then this is going to be a sort of funny little thing, a patriotic observance every day for our schools. Um, you know, starting, starting, we'll be starting that in TK. And and to me, that that is sort of a, an entree into civics education for even the younger students. But I absolutely agree that we need to have civ- uh comprehensive civics education. Um, I I'm not sure where we're going, where we would put financial skills. My concern about financial skills, although I I I absolutely agree with that, especially, for example, if we talk about um the increased student debt that that our our kids are taking on, where do we put that and will it displace something else that's important that we need to pay attention to? Um, I'm not sure when we're talking about providing more opportunities for ESL-specific courses. Are we talking about English for a second language, um specific courses? Are we talking about um, are we talking about our our English language development programs? So I need some more clarification to that. Um, I I think overall, when we say ensure courses are preparing students for a rapidly changing world, um, that's, that's the other half of the um the, the other side of 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 the high school um sort of not preparation exactly, but we're talking about how does, how does middle school articulate with high school? And so this last thing to me is, how does high school articulate with the expectation for our students to be college and career ready? So I'm, I'm, I, to me, that's sort of the, the overarching one. Um, and it actually goes back to the discussion we'll have later on our proposed vision and mission. So I'm going to leave it, those are my comments about these.
So um I believe the intent of number three, talking about English as a second language was, yes, specifically um English language development uh coursework. And then um on the fourth bullet, it's just a suggestion, it almost um could be wrapped into uh this. Sorry, uh, this modernization of the curriculum potentially, because one of the reasons you want to modernize that is so that those students are prepared for what the future looks like. Uh, Mark had his hand up. And Eve.
Thank you. Chris, you just mentioned that we'll be starting patriotic observances in TK.
No, I I I believe that, and Mark, you're, you're the guru on these things. Is there not a requirement under ed code that every day there's a patriotic observance at every school?
I I'd have to go look it up, Chris, so I'd be happy to do that. I thought, I thought I heard you mention TK.
Well, TK, if we're going to include TK in terms of uh education, you know, in terms of our um you know, our, our broad educational, you know, provisions, um, those TK classes will be on um on our school campuses. I mean, does that mean, you know, are are we going to have, you know, our TK students, for example, begin to recite the Pledge of Allegiance? Or or look at the flag, you know, what, what does our, what does our flag mean? What is appropriate for a TK student? Um, to start having them think about becoming citizens of our country.
Got it. Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Um, and if I can, um, so this, this ensure students for a rapidly changing world. Um, while I I think it goes to um the CTE and the goals, I think it's almost in, it almost a uh, one of those social skill things. Um, so if we're talking about collaboration and that, I think there maybe needs to be something about how do you adapt to change? Because the kids that, Chris, the kids that are in TK now, and I just, I'm doing this to be humorous, but also to to make it a strong point, maybe going to school in buses that are not touching the ground or don't have a school bus driver. Um, a- and you know, that's the kind of change. Um, twelve years from now, who knows what they're going to come out? Nobody may go to an office space. Um, and so either a discussion of that or at least staff aware of it, or maybe under social skills that, you know, things can change rapidly in your life, the pandemic, and and how, how do you go about accepting that? So I, it may have a dual meaning for this changing world.
Um, so really quickly, Eve, I I know Josh turned his camera on, which makes me think he has something to add um on the question that you had about um rules and regulations.
I just wanted to make a comment that there is a requirement in the education code to require daily patriotic uh exercises. And typically, this happens at the beginning of the school day, like, like Chris mentioned, with the Pledge of Allegiance, but it can be alternative um form of patriotic exercise.
With
Thanks, Justin.
So with under, with understanding, rather than a just a bi-rote, a short little you know, civics thing being the Pledge of Allegiance, I hope that's not what we're talking about, but uh overall, I would love to see a delineation in the agenda of where we can talk about what is most concerned to us, and that's all I talk about. And uh when we need to take the thirty thousand foot perspective. So in other words, I don't think we should have to, I think we, there needs to be a place where we can just talk freely about things we spend our time researching, looking about, thinking about, considering from every angle and how to present it to the board, so uh with gravitas, you know, because to me, we're talking about a ten-year evolution and as, as Mike, um, pardon me, Mark, Mark just said. I thank him for his comments. Things do happen rapidly, we need to be able to pivot this way and that way, we need to understand what, what the board intends for the school district. And if we say we're not going to do anything about curriculum issues, then we won't know what's being taught. That's the way I feel it, and we won't know how to pivot when uh the rubber meets the road. So um with that regard, I just wanted to say thank you for hearing this, but um I'd love to have uh it be considered, that's some of the things I was saying.
Eve, well, I I hope that the members of the board feel like they've had opportunity to talk about what's most concerning to them. I I know sometimes we have quite of a lengthy conversation and and that's in part because I I want you all to feel like you had an opportunity to say what you want to say. Um, looking at the time, I I would like to to wrap this up and move into our next um agenda item, so I would like to get in, like, just a general thumbs up, thumbs down on um some potential additions to the goals in the document. on some potential additions to the goals in the document. So I'm hearing at least a couple of people say that they'd like to see comprehensive civics education as a goal, and perhaps so we could put it as a district wide goal, since there was some comment made by Chris that he would like to see that beyond just secondary school. Is there anyone who feels like they don't want to see that added to the document?
Adrian, I I might only offer that we do have the civics education in our government graduation requirement, which I think Leslie O'Connor could speak to briefly. But just making sure that the board understands that there is a piece of that at the high school level at this at this current time. And I'd say the same thing about financial skills. They will find that in our economics class requirement. And Leslie could give a couple of words about that if the board wanted any information.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And Diane, thank you so much for reminding me that you you and the rest of the staff know what's already in your curriculum. And I don't want to have to add a bunch of goals in that are just duplicative of what you're already doing.
Agreed. I I do want to acknowledge that we're talking about middle and high school, and I can reference high school at this point.
Yep. So, yes, take it away, please.
Yeah, just jumping in, you know, thank you, Diane. At the comprehensive, the the civics education as a graduation requirement, obviously in the twelfth grade, there's an extensive review and in-depth analysis of civics education for all seniors per ed code for graduation requirement. And and then the financial skills also. Economics, whether it be at the advanced placement level or the college prep economics course, you're looking at financial skills that are being taught in high school to the students. Now, the level of of depth that the teachers are able to go into, we can certainly work on, but those are two areas that I know that we cover extensively as part of graduation requirement in high school. And as a former teacher of those specific courses, I know that we really do dot our i's and cross our t's, so to speak. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Leslie. Mark. And then Catherine.
So so I'm not sure where it came up, but it's, you know, the concept of the board understanding the duplicative nature of stuff. And I'm just going to share a lot of the stuff that we're talking about is duplicative. And I, my sense is, is this the this is the place where sometimes we support that, that that is a goal of the board. But I'm not sure that the fact that it's already being taught doesn't stop the board from saying, and this is important to the board. So I I I love hearing that we're doing it. But I also feel that if the board and Chris, you know, brought it up, is saying, maybe civics across the board, that's that's a goal that the board has is looking at. That's a, for me, that's a thirty thousand footer.
Josh, and then Catherine.
And to follow up on Mark's comment, you know, the reason this process is underway is because at the initial part of this discussion, the very first session, we talked about how it within your own policies and bylaws is embedded this strategic planning process. And so this is an effort to not only acknowledge the planning that has already been undertaken and the measures that are already underway, but to plan for the future. So I think I think it's appropriate to try to capture some of the board's interests and priorities and and goals that are already in process, that are already being implemented.
Okay. Catherine, did you have anything you would like to add?
Yes, but it's totally unrelated. It's just a mea culpa for my late arrival. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I have a house full of millennials of my own coming and going, and I convinced myself we weren't starting until ten o'clock. So I'm apologizing for being late, and I'm going to catch up, I promise.
Okay. Thank you for that. Marilyn.
You know, I I understand everything that's been said. I I agree with a number of things. I just, I guess, want to put out there that my, I feel very strongly that we teach the standards that we can express an interest, in my opinion. We can express an interest in including some specific curricula into the standards, but that it is not in the board's purview to design how that's implemented. I think that's a a huge overstep and an area that we we run real danger if we get into. We have staff that designs our classes and make sure that they're compliant. And I I I really don't feel that it's, well, it's definitely not the thirty thousand foot view. It's a dangerous place to go when we have the board trying to design curriculum. And I and I'm not saying that we have done so. It's this is just a cautionary word. Thank you.
Thanks, Marilyn. So to go back to the potential for wrapping up our conversation on high school. So I've heard you're absolutely have a comprehensive civics education requirement currently in high school that financial skills are being taught in economics courses in high school. Are there any board members who feel strongly that you want to include goal language here? In addition to that, Josh is saying you can, you don't necessarily need to. You could also revisit, and remember, this is a living document. You can revisit this later in the year as well.
I I guess I'm I'm still not really clear what bullet point number three is, and if we're talking more about English language development throughout the grade levels. I I I'm just still a little confused about what number three means and 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 how that might be a part of this.
Okay, absolutely. I I'll let Eve speak. I guess I was just trying to wrap up the first two, since I heard some conversation from a number of board members that they might have interest in this. Can we do that first and then talk about the ESL piece? And Eve, did you have something to add for the first two bullets here?
Well, I wanted to speak to, well, I could, but I right now I'm following suit with what Chris just said. And so that is that I believe that statistics showed that there's a lot of ELD redesignation as fully proficient in English that is not happening yet. So this bullet point would hopefully, and it could be called ELD, I believe, like we said before, that this and mind mind you, I was a bilingual ELD teacher, I mean, a B-clad teacher for twenty five years, advocating for those who can't advocate for themselves. So at any rate, opportunities for them to read more, find out why they're not getting fully re-designated and then provide the equity remediation that's needed there so that they can re-designate as fully English proficient FVP.
Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yeah, it does. And and what it, I I know you want to go back to the first two. But following in my's, in my mind, following Eve's line of thinking, that becomes a more that becomes a more district wide goal relating to how we how we're instructing students in English language development and then how we're seeing whether those students, in fact, move from the different levels of toward FVP. So and and we we actually looked at some of that, I believe, in some of the high school data that you provided to us, is students that were long-term ELS, English language learners. And so I I'm seeing this as more, I see that as more of a general goal for the district relating to language instruction rather than just for middle and high school students.
Rick, Rick, would you like to weigh in on this? Because I think Eve brings up a really good point. I'd like you to kind of explain to us how we are on track to increase redesignation, to ensure kids, by the time they exit our schools, are are re-designated to the best ability possible. What does that landscape look like right now?
Yeah, thank you. We've done a lot of work on redesignation over the last several years. Dawn Addis has spearheaded that at the elementary level. And a lot of that work is done at the elementary level, because when those kids come in as English learners in kindergarten, you know, we have them, they they belong to us for seven years at the elementary level. And they should, by all accounts, be re-designated by the time they leave sixth grade. Those numbers have improved drastically over the last five or six years, but there's still work to be done. We also see students coming in at middle and high school, escaping whatever situation they're in in other countries and coming to us as newcomers at the middle school and high school. And that's more problematic for how to deal with kids. And some of them come in with solid skills in their native languages and others don't come in with solid skills in their native language. And that makes it doubly hard to re-designate those students as English proficient. We are, this coming school year, exploring newcomer materials and newcomer courses at both middle and high school, because those students have unique needs. And we can't necessarily expect a biology teacher or a government teacher to be able to, you know, facilitate the learning of a student with zero English skills at, you know, sophomore freshman year and get them up to speed. And so there are some things we need to look at in terms of supporting those students at middle and high school, and we're doing that. We spent yesterday, we it was our second day of our summer institute with our principals, and both at Leslie, at middle and high school, and I at elementary, spent a significant amount of time on ELD and how important it is to get back on track with our English language development instruction, K twelve, right away, right out of the chute when we get these kids back in the fall. So there's a lot that's happening with English language development and supporting our English learners. There's a lot that has happened over the last however many years. And and there is still a lot of work to be done to support kids, to make sure that, you know, they're successful. But I can assure you, this is on our radar. It was at the top of the agenda yesterday, and both groups spent a significant amount of time on ELD and supporting our English learner students. I think what what we're after in this bullet, perhaps it's again, a wording issue. I I'm not sure ESL is the is the term. And I think maybe, you know, rewording it to say something along the lines of supporting our English learner students to re-designate, you know, as quickly as possible and as, you know, effectively, completely as possible. That's not a process you necessarily want to hurry. But to assist our English learner students, K twelve, to re-designate and to gain career and college readiness by the end of high school is what we're after.
That's good.
Evelyn wanted to say something, and I'm quickly writing down what Rick said.
I when I looked at this, I when it said ESL, I was thinking you were including adult education and and targeting that. So I'm glad you clarified that. I would, though, and this gets to kind of what Mr. Mayfield is saying, because it was really a concern, and it really struck out at me when we were looking at the slides, that really, you know, seventy five percent of our high school students, though, and they're, and you know, and it and really, it was even higher, if you include us, are not re-designated. And so it can't be that all of those are newcomers. So what, you know, as as you're digging into this, it would be helpful as a board member to get, and what is going on that, you know, we have this significant portion of students that's, you know, really high, because they don't really have access to the curriculum in in ways that, you know, we're really our goals and 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 all these great things we're doing as a as as a district. And so what's that? You know, backwards mapping, and I, you know, that's not me, but it did strike me out when I was looking at those pie charts. I didn't realize that we had such a significant number. I think I, I mean, I was looking at percentage, it was like seventy five to eighty one percent. I mean, we have a significant number that have been designated, but there is huge chunks of kids sitting at our secondary sites that, right, I can't, I I don't think they're just the newcomer kids. So it would be helpful to have more information about, you know, how we got there or whatever. But again, that's kind of off track. So something I I was really struck by.
Yeah, your point's well taken, this frame. There's a couple of issues there. It's it's not always a language issue. You know, for our for some of our long-term English learners, it it's not necessarily about language when they've been in our schools for for a long period of time. Some of them speak English beautifully, and it's more of an executive functioning issue and how they're able or not able to complete work and be successful in school. So it's something we talk about, and I know Leslie covered this yesterday with the middle and high school teachers is the ELD. And in addition to that, executive functioning skills and and really honing in on what is the issue? Is this is this a student who just is having difficulty accessing the curriculum because of their language abilities? Or is it an executive functioning issue for a student that, you know, understands and speaks English very well, but just academically has not been successful in our schools? And as I said, you know, this is at the top of our list of things that we're paying attention to.
So I'm going to make another attempt to to see if we can wrap up our conversation. Becca, I'm just giving you notice that I I would love it if you would type this up that I'm what I'm about to say, so we could potentially put it on the screen to show the board. So I'm hearing kind of three potential additional goals and a and a change to one. So the first one would be, does the board wish to specifically call out an emphasis on comprehensive civics education district wide? Does the board want to specifically call out financial skills readiness in advancement of graduation? Does the board want to put a district wide goal in of supporting English language learners K through twelve to re-designate and to gain career and college readiness? And do we want to make adjustment to modernizing academic curricula, including reading lists and relevant experts? Do we want to include somewhere in there this concept of readiness for a rapidly changing world or not? Or do we feel like that's already kind of encompassed in our vision and core principles? So that's kind of what I've heard from the additional comments that people have made. Is there any others that I have not captured that we want to get a general consensus on? Mark has one additional.
Well, no, I think I think it's just one that maybe we've beaten to death, but I just, if we want to make sure we capture the non-technical skills.
Oh, sorry. So that that I was, I'm I was mentally reserving that for our next conversation, which is changes that we're going to make to the document, which is whether we need to add definitions or change wording so that things are more clear. And one of those would be for non-technical. And there was another one that I'll have to find in my notes really quickly. I feel like there was another one that you flagged that you would like a definition.
If you got it, you got it. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Adrian, I'm sorry, will you say the ELD one again?
Yeah, supporting English language learners K through twelve to re-designate and gain career and college readiness. Do you feel like I accurately captured what you were saying, Rick?
Yeah, of course, it's up to the board what their what their goal is. But yeah, I think I think that is what we were after with that third bullet and and that wording more, in my opinion, you know, more exemplifies what what the points that were being made.
So if it's okay with everyone, I'm going to put that on the screen. I'm going to have Becca put that on the screen, which Mandy, you might need to give her designation to do that. And then I'm going to ask you all in turn, on each one of them, whether consensus wise, you'd like us to consider working with staff to add that concept to the draft for in advance of your next meeting. Is that okay with all of you? Okay. Becca, can you share?
I don't know, Mandy, no, I no, I can't. I don't know if Mandy can hear me beg for the ability to share a screen, but I don't have it yet. I don't know if Mandy can hear me beg for the ability to share a screen, but I don't have it yet.
Mandy, are you there?
I am. Just give me one second here.
Okay.
Thank you. I know. It takes a minute.
Okay, there we go. Hold on. Okay, is that working?
Yes. So for this first one, you already have, you know, comprehensive civics education called out in the curriculum. Does the board feel like they wish to have this also in the strategic direction document? I have two thumbs up. Sorry, I have to scroll to see you all. Looks like I have, is that a three? Is that a three?
And 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 I just, to me, civics education doesn't even describe what I would call the the larger goal, which is to for us to create to create active, productive, engaged citizens in our country. And the way we do it is through civics education, if that makes sense.
I agree.
Chris and Eve, do you do you feel like we should add that language to this goal? So it it
Oh, I I I just, I feel the civics education is a vehicle to do this other thing I just mentioned. And and that's why I I I believe this should be, I would like to advocate for this to be one of our other goals as we look at our district-wide things, because I think it's that important.
So you could have a district-wide goal that says ensure emphasis on a comprehensive civics education to create active, productive and engaged citizens, right? I mean, that is one potential wording of such a goal.
An active comprehensive civics.
Adrian?
Yes.
So Chris, I I I think Adrian captured it. I'm not sure, going to Marilyn's point, it needs to even be that we point out civics. What I'm hearing you say is whatever, so, you know, community, political, conscious, whatever it is. But the words that Adrian used, but let's maybe just drop the word civics.
That gives me a problem because then the altitude is getting higher and higher, and we're not finding a vehicle to expressly deliver the learning experience.
Yeah, but potentially you would be interweaving that into a number of areas of the curriculum, right? And that's for staff to take your intent and ensure that that is happening.
Well, I don't know.
Ellen, do you have a thought?
Yeah, I'm so confused. I mean, I don't know what district-wide civics, I don't even know what that means. Are we talking about individual courses? Are we talking about an embedded sort of thing? I think just saying in our goals that we want to create active, productive, engaged citizens, you know, then that's a way to do that. But this feels to me like, are we? Again, we're instructing staff on what they need to be doing and where to put it. And if we're already teaching to the standards, does the is this part of what that is? So I would look again to Diane and Rick and Leslie to, you know, is this? Are we adding classes? Are we, you know, are, you know, we said if we do the Pledge of Allegiance, is that enough? Or, you know, I I'm just, I find this getting really murky, murky instead of clearer to me. I'm not feeling like clarity is being is being had by me. It's just raising more questions instead of clarifying anything.
Mark.
So I I I think, Ellen, for me, we're going, and for those and for others that may think this, I think we're going away from saying to staff, create classes, do this. I think we're just going to some of that, you know, bigger, higher-end culture of safety, continuous improvement, all of those are the big things.
Then why do we need this at all? If we're already doing this, why do we, why do we need this? I mean, to me, it sounds like if I were, if I were in a in the classroom or a staff member, I'd be seen saying, well, how do you want me to do this?
Well, and I think that's a good, I think that that's not a bad point. I think that what I just learned is we're only doing it in 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 high school. And what I'm hearing Chris say is this, this is an overarching. So we have things like accelerate closure, the achievement and opportunity gap through targeted support that allows for learning leaps. I mean, I don't, I I'm not sure I care how staff does it. I I'm going to agree that that's a heck of a district, good district-wide goal. But we're not doing, just for a broader term, we're not doing civics throughout throughout the district. And I think it's an interesting, and it's it's an interesting thing. Develop strong visual and performing arts programs at the elementary.
But what I'm saying, Marcus, I don't know that there's agreement on that because
Yeah, yeah.
Throughout, she wants it throughout. So
I got that.
I guess I just, you know, I'm
No, I I got that there may not be agreement. I think the words that are up on the screen right now, goal to engage active, productive and engaged citizens is broad enough for staff to deal with.
So I had three people who supported it. How about they just having the district-wide goal of engaging active, productive, engaged citizens? Just quickly, does that change? Because otherwise, I would say you probably don't have consensus on adding that. Chris?
Yeah, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it at the goal to create active, productive, engaged citizens because that could encompass, as I'm thinking about it, that looks like more than civics education. That is science education. That is English language learning. That is, that is, you know, what what's the goal? We want, we want, we want our children to become the keepers of our democracy. And there are many ways to do that. Civics education is one of them. So I'm 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 going to support as a an overarching goal, create active, productive and engaged citizens.
All right. So Chris supports someone. Can I have a thumbs up, thumbs down on adding that?
And well, adding that, but not without this other, the other stuff that's up there right now, just
No, remove that, remove that, just to create
I I would support that.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like the majority supports that. So we will work with staff to create wording that captures that in a district-wide goal. Next up is, do you want to have a specific goal in the high school grade span on ensuring financial skill readiness in advance of graduation? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Well, I I would just add, I think, I think this goes to some of the other things we have about being ready to 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 leave high school prepared for life after high school. So finding, having, having strong financial skills could be, I think, could be subsumed under something else we already have up there. And I would just throw that out there as this as an idea. I I I believe, though, that the idea of having financial skills readiness is very important. I'm not sure that it's standalone or if it, like I said, can be subsumed under something else that's already up there.
Mark.
Yep. So maybe this is a question for Josh, maybe not, maybe for Leslie. Is the financial skills class that's now offered, is that embedded? Or is it a required in a in a required curriculum class? Or is it something that somebody could, that it's optional along the way?
So Mark, to answer your question, it is embedded to a certain level within the economics course specifically. It could also be called out as perhaps a standalone course. But then that could be an elective opportunity for students to take as opposed to another graduation requirement of some form. But it really depends on the the time and the level of detail that the teacher in the economics program would have to be able to go into the financial literacy or the financial skills curriculum itself. So you could have either or.
Okay, so just for clarification, so this is what I'm hearing, Leslie, is the every high school student takes the economics class?
That is correct.
Also, Marl Bay High School?
Yes, it's a graduation requirement. All students who graduate have to complete economics as part of the graduation requirement.
Carolyn.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor, when I look at this item, what it brings up for me are financial skills such as how do you use your checkbook? How do you balance your checkbook? How do you calculate compound interest? You know, a lot, very basic sort of financial life skills. Are those, so far as you know, are those currently incorporated into the econ curriculum?
That's a great question. So balancing the checkbook definitely would have been something we would have talked about five, 10, 15 years ago. What's interesting is, as the onset of use of money electronically, you know, and goes back to one of the talking points we've talked about already about the changing world. We talk about now Venmo, or we talk about Apple Pay, or you're talking about apps for people to be able to utilize. That's what students are more adept at today than even the concept of what is a checkbook, to be perfectly honest. The compounding of interest is something that the teacher would cover with regard to investment strategies or investment portfolios. It all really truly depends on the 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 time that the teacher has to go into this and in the economics course. But it is something that we really truly want to shine a light on and bring more to the attention of the students. But it is something that we as a staff can kind of work with our economics teachers to make sure that they carve out that needed time to have that financial skills or literacy skills in finance in the course itself. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. And I have an interest in that. I don't want to craft the course, but I appreciate that you've said you can you can indicate that that's something that should be should be touched on for sure. So thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Eve.
Okay, since we're talking about that, I'm going to ask, do they understand the importance of a personal balance sheet? Expenses and assets and expenses, assets and debits and all of that so that they could be responsible in their handling of money? And we have a huge student debt, a student debt bubble, you know? And are they going to do that when they get to college? Those are the kinds of things I think are important for not only the individual student, but our society as a whole, not going into another depression, a cytokine storm, if you will.
Yeah, in the economics curriculum, I mean, there's a focus on both micro and macro, whether that be on the banking process, you're looking at one of your initial chapters is on opportunity cost. You're looking at the cost benefit analysis, you're looking at leasing of vehicles versus purchasing of vehicles. You're looking at home interest loans. I mean, all of those are taking place within that curriculum micro level. And then obviously looking at the macro policies of fiscal or monetary policy and interest rates and cost of borrowing and things like that. Ultimately, it always comes back to that opportunity cost, and that's one of the opening salvos within the curriculum. But again, it's something we can shore up and and intensify with our teachers to make sure it's called out.
I think it's important. I just really do.
Mark, and then I'm gonna suggest we try and come to some consensus about this.
So Leslie, so having this statement, which, you know, quite honestly, was, and it was already there and it was does this help you and staff understand what the what a board expectation?
Absolutely, a hundred percent. And I I just, you know, I I would agree with this one hundred percent as well. It's it's a missing puzzle piece for many of our students, and I know that's something that comes out of our Student Senate. I know that comes out of feedback from our students. And it is something that we should and probably could look at in the coming year. Because if it's a need maybe for it to, as a standalone addition or an elective offering for students, that's something we could explore with our students and our staff. But it is something that I can now work with our team on with regard to making sure that we do carve out real time within the curriculum to make sure it's covered.
So I'm going to put you a little bit on the spot here, Leslie, and 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 see if you could suggest some wording here to 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 ensure an emphasis on financial skills readiness in advance to graduation. Does that sound right? Or how would you tweak that to, and then I'm going to propose it to them?
I would almost replicate the goal above. Goal is to create active, productive and financially responsible citizens.
But can we have it called out separately so that it will get more due, you know?
And Becca's grabbing that really quickly?
Can I, can I suggest?
Yeah.
Can I suggest something here? I I I think if we're gonna I think if we're going to, because I've had two sons that have gone through our system. And and I would say the word that we should might, that might help us is as a goal is to enhance existing courses that teach financial literacy. The the word enhance as a broad goal, you're thirty thousand feet. What it means to us as a staff is, what does that mean? How do we strengthen it? How do we enhance it? Because you have some kids who are just dealing in cash in their lives. You have other kids that can't wait to get that credit card, and their lives are about to get destroyed. So how do we enhance what we're currently doing in our existing courses? So we're not talking about creating new courses. We're not talking about adding things. What we're really talking about is a board saying, we think this is important, and we think it needs to perhaps be enhanced. And I think that's that sends a very powerful message to our team. That's what I think.
Marilyn, you had a quick thought?
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Prater there. And I and I would point out the obvious that his sons come from a family that understands and and is financially literate, where many of our students don't. So enhancing works for me, and it speaks to the need of many students to get that, that's just sort of baseline understanding. No, no knock on your kids, Eric. It's just that, you know, my kids too probably had a greater understanding than many many students, and I and I have an interest in reaching all of our students with at least some basic information. And I leave it to administration to ensure how that occurs.
So should we say enhance existing courses that teach financial literacy to ensure financial skill readiness or just just leave it as is?
It's, it seems to me we have one course in high school as a graduation requirement that teaches it. And it's econ, government and econ. And what I'm saying is take something that we currently have, where we know it's being taught, and enhance it. Strengthen it, build upon it. Mark, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thanks. Just to Marilyn's point, I came from a pretty entitled family. And with, within a few months of college, I was so messed up. So I just to assume that I just, I think everybody's going to need it. Second, to to the word enhance, I get it. And a lot of the other things that we're talking about will end up as staff doing what they what they want with it. So they'll either enhance what they have, they'll add what they have. Again, to Chris's comment about thirty thousand feet, just somehow we express, and I think it was further up. And I think Leslie's thing is kind of to it. Just, just, just something to to the staff and to the community that says ensure students are financially, have the tools to be financially responsible citizens. And I don't care how staff does it. It's just a goal of of the boards. And if you want it, you want to enhance the program, cool, that's great.
So Becca, maybe it's enhance existing courses that teach financial literacy to create financially responsible citizens?
No, that's, that's
Okay.
Okay, and I appreciate it, Adrian, but it's the wording. Okay, and I appreciate it, Adrian, but it's the word enhance that's, that's, that's probably made a stumble. And it's the word existing. I think that's very restrictive and not the board's role, right? The goal is to have students graduate as financially responsible citizens. And I, again, I don't care whether staff, one person, I don't care if they enhance. I don't care if they add. Just be aware that the board, this is one of the board's goals. Just my two cents.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm getting agitated. I've had a little too much.
Coffee.
Chris, and I think Evelyn.
I, I, I agree with what Mark said. And again, I, I don't, I, I do not believe this should be a standalone goal. I think it's too restrictive. I think there are other things we've talked about that, that this could be a part of. But I'm not, I'm not in support of a specific goal to teach financial literacy. I'm, I think it belongs somewhere else in part of one of our larger goals.
Evelyn.
Well, I was going to ask, I know this is a little tongue in cheek, Mr. O'Connor, if I could take this class? Because I know that rapidly evolving, whether it's Venmo, PayPal, Apple thing. And I guess what I'm saying is I agree with what Chris is saying. You know, and, and Mark, the restriction, things are rapidly changing. And so what this is, you know, there's some basic financial, you know, debt, I mean, compound interest. But, but there are so many things that are changing. What we say this course or what this course looks like, you know, four or five years now. So I think it has to be dynamic and we really need, you know, to be looking kind of forward. So that's really all I have to say. Supportive of, of what Chris was saying.
Josh wants to add something. I always want to let Josh talk.
Just one thing to note is that economics and financial literacy per CDE, it's actually embedded in more than just a financial literacy elective course or economics. It's actually embedded throughout the K-12 system through math courses and the history, social sciences framework. So there are aspects of financial literacy that are embedded throughout the, what is required to be provided through these different frameworks. But it definitely, I think, can be enhanced or it can be improved upon depending on how much focus is given by the district with the extra resources and other aspects of financial literacy that are available, that are being promulgated by CDE as accessible for, for teachers to utilize.
Thank you for that, Josh. So again, because I'm, I know you guys have other things on your agenda for the day. I'm going to suggest, and we can tweak the wording for the last draft for you. Is there consensus around the idea of a goal that is about enhancing existing courses to ensure teaching financial literacy, to ensure financially responsible citizens?
No, I'm going to come back again, Adrian, and with the support of Chris. I think if we use the word enhance existing courses, that we're totally dictating stuff to staff. So
So I'm going to try this again.
Eliminate that concept, I'm going to be fine with the other, with, with just financial skills. I don't care.
Okay, so.
And responsibility has to be in there.
So work to ensure students have the tools to be financially responsible citizens. Something along those lines.
And he used, Mark used the word skills too. So I, tools, skills, I don't know, maybe they're the same.
Yeah, how about we work with staff about the wording there, financially responsible citizens, having adequate financial literacy? Either of those concepts, I think, is where you're going with it. And if there's a dramatic wording change that needs to happen, you'll see this draft in advance of your August meeting. Yes, no, thumbs up, thumbs down, you want to see specific emphasis of this in?
I'd like, I'd like to see what it looks like, but at this point, again, I believe it, it should be a part of another goal. I don't believe, I'm not going to be in support of it being a standalone goal, but I'd like to have it be brought back. At the, you know, and then I can look at it and decide in August.
So I have two, three. Okay, so I'm, I'm not seeing consensus in adding it, but I know that there's some specific interest and the staff have heard you. So we'll noodle on it and.
I saw four, I saw, I saw majority myself.
Did you? I'm sorry, I saw Eve, and Marilyn.
And Chris.
No, Chris said no.
No, I, I, I said, I, I'd like to see it. You guys, you guys work on it and I want to see it in August because at this point, I'm not going to support it as a standalone goal. But I, but I'm willing to look at it, given other, given your whatever modifications the staff may be able to come up with. And then I'll decide later. Yeah, that, that, that's my preference, but I'd like to see it. I'm, I'm open to looking at it.
So next item, supporting English learners K through 12 to redesignate and gain career and college readiness. Is that something you want called out, a specific district wide goal in this document? I see two thumbs up, three,
Yeah.
Four. Okay, we will work on some wording there, Evelyn.
Well, what does this mean? I mean, I feel like for the entire, this is what, this, I mean, for, for years we have been doing. So what is this? I guess, so that's my confusion. I mean, we can say it, but I just, I have not a clue. I mean, I need some background on what, because I mean, it's something we've been continually doing and so I.
Doesn't this go along with continuous improvement and what we, what we do as a district? I mean, we, we, I don't, I'm, I'm with, I'm with Evelyn on this one. I don't really, it feels like what we, what we do.
I think, and, and for me, it really folds into that program monitoring and evaluation. I mean, if we've been doing this all along, but you know, we have pie charts indicating some issues, then it's, you know, this, this seems like it's not going to get us to where we need to go because we have been doing this. So that's all, that's just my take on it.
Even Catherine.
So I heard earlier that this might be a good one to help support the learning loss that is extreme, that is most evident in this, in this subgroup. And that we wanted to address that maybe by calling it out since the lockdown has made it just that much more obvious. So I heard somebody bring that up earlier as being that this would be a good way to take a more closer lens look at how we can support them.
Catherine, did you want to add anything?
I just want to say I like the way the wording is on this because I think it's aspirational. It's not only redesignating and, you know, making a hurdle. It's like, you know, here's the sky, you know, go for it. And so I, I, I like the way it's worded.
So there was the majority of board that felt like they'd like to see this in there. So we'll work with staff to come up with something that is encapsulating what they also feel needs some extra emphasis. And you will see what they come up with. And then the last one really quickly, do we want to, or should we just leave it alone? That first bullet of modernizing curriculum. Do we, do we feel like there needs to be an added addition about readiness for rapidly changing world? I mean, that is in your vision statement already, basically. So it doesn't necessarily need to be there, but I did hear it from at least one member.
Yeah, I brought this up. I'm, I'm willing to totally pass on it. I think you're right, Adrian. I think it's covered in lots of places unless other board members have bought into it.
All right, I'm not seeing any urgent waving of hands. So I'm going to say that you've got that encapsulated in the document. Thank you very much. We will make some changes to the goals. And you will see that reflected in the next version.
So Adrian, I'd like to suggest that before we start the next section, we take a 10 minute break as soon as you're done.
Yep. So the only other agenda item that you have with us today is to talk about the overall document as a whole. And again, I wanted to hopefully keep that to your major concerns, things that you can't live with in the draft that you seen, since it is mostly, except for the middle school and high school section, is items that you've already seen in other packaging before that. So we can take a break and come back to quickly visit that before you move on to your next items. Does that sound good for everyone? And Chris, when do you want us back?
Let me look at a clock here. It's 11:27 right now. Why don't we come back at 11:37? How about that? Everybody's got a smartphone, they should, we should be able to figure it out. So we'll see you all in 10 minutes. Thank you. Thanks, Adrian. Thanks, Becca. Thanks to everybody for this robust discussion. One, two, three, four, five. We see Eva's back. Five. Okay. We're gonna give, we're gonna give it one more minute. Actually, it's, we're going, I'll give it one more minute and then we'll begin. We do have a quorum of the board right now. Okay, it's been, it's been time. We have a quorum of the board. Before we start again, Adrian, I do want to ask if there is anybody who needs, continues to need translation. If you do, would you please raise your hand right now so that we can see that? And if not, then I'm going to release the translator. So Mandy, can you keep an eye on that and let me know, please?
Absolutely.
So again, please, if there's anybody that continues to need translation, please let me know. Raise your hand and raise, you can raise your hand or you can raise your hand, you know, using the Zoom hand raising little app thing.
Great. Well, welcome back. Thanks for staying with us. Oh, yeah, Chris?
But I just want to wait till I hear from Mandy and see if Mandy has anyone.
There's no one that requires translation at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mandy. Then let's release the translator and let's continue on with the meeting, please.
Okay, so we are on the agenda item to discuss the draft document that we sent you, the district strategic direction document. And just a reminder that this document was a culmination of a process that we've been doing since February over six strategic sessions where we got staff and board inputs while considering the content and comments that they've heard from students and parents in the community over the last couple of years. It's the culmination of a number of hours of one-on-one conversations, staff presentations and group discussion. And that we are reviewing this draft today in advance of it coming back to the board for final approval in August. Given the timing, the time of the day and the fact that none of the content in here, except for what we just discussed for middle school and high school should be new, it's just packaged in a new way, and that we've already gained initial consensus on the vision and core principles in June, I'm going to ask that the board bring up any major concerns with concepts that you have in this document and try and hold your comments to that and defer to staff's wording and wordsmithing of the document if that needs to happen. There are three things that came up in our last conversation that I'll present to you that we will do. One was the discussion of non-technical, working with staff to come up with some additional wording there. There was a general concern about terminology like schools to watch in the document. So we will work with staff to ensure that we're using easy to understand language in the document and where there is a term of art like schools to watch, that there'll be a short footnote to link to a website or a quick description of what we mean so that the document is a little bit more user friendly for people outside of staff and board. And that we will work on beefing up the section on measuring success so we more clearly talk about evaluating and ongoing monitoring of the goals. So not just student success and student academic achievement, but also the goals within this document. In addition to Evelyn in middle school where we talked about specifically wanting to add some concept of evaluate in addition to just create. Those were the three things that I heard that the board felt needed to happen. Consensus wise, those three things, does that sound like the board would like us to do that? So make sure we're using easy terminology and where we have to use a term of art, we try and explain it briefly in a footnote. Again, looking at how we're saying non-technical skills and is there other language that's more specifically getting to that concept for people and beefing up the measuring success section. So people clearly more understand that we are going to continuously evaluate meeting these goals in this document. Does that all sound good to folks as changes to make? Okay, I am seeing consensus on that. So then I guess I will just again, open it up to the group to ask you for your feedback. But I'm asking also that you really keep your feedback to major concerns you have with the document. It is a living document and as you start to implement it, you can always work with Dr. Prater in 2022 to make changes if there's something that's not working for you. But it seemed like in our conversations on June 10th, that the majority, that the vision and the mission and the core principles were working for you. So is there anything of major concern here that would prevent you from moving to this next step in August? Evelyn?
Am I, okay, just real quick. And it kind of goes back to what we were saying when the consistency, when I'm looking at the draft, early education goals and then upper elementary education goals and middle school education goals, the one thing that I didn't see that I saw in upper and middle was really that reference to, you know, kind of hands-on project-based and it's kind of clearly called out in the others. So I'm wondering if it was inadvertently left out or did we, I mean, I know it's such a fundamental part of what happens, but it just kind of struck out at me. So, you know, I just, as I was reading that, I put, I just made a note. Is that something that we inadvertently left out?
So I think one of the, I think the issue here is, is that it's actually hiding in district-wide goals under academic excellence on page six. The one, two, three, fourth bullet says, continue to strengthen opportunities to, for creative, hands-on, engaging learning for students in grades K through eight.
Okay.
So I, and I, I think it probably ended up there because it's K through eight and not elementary. So there is a little duplicity there, duplicativeness. Okay, I don't even know what word I'm looking for here. Between the middle school section and the district-wide section because it does say K through eight and district-wide.
Duplication, duplication.
Thank you, thank you. There's the word. Um, so does the, do people have concern about it kind of being a little duplicative there? We could, we could always, um, you know, it's kind of captured in that district-wide. We don't necessarily need it in middle school.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess that's, I guess that was, you know, when I was looking at it, it specifically called out in middle school. And when I went back to the other document, it was K through eight and it's called out through four through six. So it's just whatever, whatever is decided, it just was a little bit inconsistent and I wasn't sure. So the way.
Yeah, no, that's a good catch, Evelyn. How about we, I'm going to propose to the group that we take that third bullet in middle school and just make sure that those concepts are also encapsulated and leave it in the district, just leave it in district-wide. And, you know, I think we have hands-on project-based learning down here. I don't know if we have the word project-based in the upper one. So we'll just make sure that the languages sync up there.
Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
The only other thing, the only other thing Adrian and I had was, and this is just, it's kind of a technical term. And I don't know if anybody agrees with me, but when I look at the measuring success and looking at those, the first paragraph and that last sentence, they will evaluate progress using multiple reliable measures. There's a word that strikes me as missing and it's just, you know, coming from background is the valid. You know, when you're looking at something that's, you know, that measurement has to be valid and reliable. Those are really two terms that, you know, and they mean very different things. So I read it in a different way. And so maybe nobody else reads it that way. But I, it's just something that I, it, 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 it says something different. And so that's why it kind of struck to me that those words, we might need to include those. But again, that's just me. So instead of having, you know, using the multiple, I mean, we do, is, you know, valid, reliable, and even maybe consistent measures so that, you know, I know we're trying to do a lot of multiple measures, but it's also when I'm, and this is just for me, when I'm looking at information, I need some kind of consistency in the pattern so I can really kind of determine for myself when something is presented to me. That's just a global kind of need for me. So I don't know, Dr. Prater, what are your thoughts on what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I see your point. And, you know, I think, I think we're attempting to, to gain that level of clarity. So Adrian, I defer to you. What language do you think could help with this?
I mean, I think, you know, that's totally fine to use that language. I think I have the language here because I was mirroring some language in one of your core principles into this section. I think valid, reliable is fine. Consistent, I'm kind of assuming you're probably already trying as much as you can to be consistent in your measuring.
Yeah, the hardest part, and I agree, we are, we have tried to keep a consistent set of measures. But remember, we're, we're, we just adopted FastBridge. We just adopted an assessment tool that's more effective, we believe, and more efficient, more efficient and effective for teachers. And, and it's got more capacity. So, and we shouldn't also forget that the state continues to change and evolve in their assessment in the, in the dashboard assessment data. Plus, you know, we've now had three years, four years of baseline data with Youth Truth. We have California Healthy Kids Survey, and now we have, we're the only district in the entire county that gave us back this last year. So we're trying to keep our consistent, our measures consistent. And I do believe Ellen's point, Evelyn's point is correct, that we should embed consistent in there wherever possible, you know, that that is, that is something that allows us to create that baseline consistent data tells us, it just, yeah, it just allows us to be more effective in our, in our assessment of the effectiveness of these programs that we're trying to implement. And it's hard.
And Eric, to your point, I mean, it is, things are changing. It also provides kind of the ability, when we can, to provide that longitudinal kind of perspective, even with, but, but you're right. I mean, we, we have new things coming on board. So it was just that terminology about, you know, making sure that we're valid, reliable and consistent. But.
Well, you know, I guess I, go ahead, Chris.
I was going to say that when I think about the consistency, what we want is we want to be able to as much as possible measure as they say apples to apples. So what I think we will want to do is be able to agree on the major areas that, that we need the data from and make sure that we're consistently measuring the final, the ultimate outcome data. Because I mean, we, we know that we want to measure reading, for example, and we had to go from the SRIs to something else because the SRIs were discontinued, remember? But, you know, making, that's the consistent part, I think, is what you're talking about, Evelyn, is how do we know from year to year whether students are making progress? How do we know that cohorts are making progress, right? And the, the means of the measurement may change, but the measurement, the ultimate goal of the measurement should not change. And I think that's, I hope that's what you're trying to get at when you're talking about consistency.
And I guess just given that these measures sometimes go away, or there's new more effective ones coming and the state changes their opinions for you, you've got a lot of external factors are influencing how you are able to measure. So I guess I would advise you, even though consistency is something you're striving for, I would maybe not necessarily put that word in there because I think you don't want to box yourself in per se, but saying that you're using multiple reliable, valid, reliable measures, I think is something that you could do and we will work with staff to make sure that we have that intent. Ellen?
I, I'm hesitant to, to make this comment because I generally try to stay away from wordsmithing because then I think we want to get into, get, get into things that could take us all day. But I think in light of the comment about the, what we do change, it can sometimes change that, and this is just personally, and I, and we can just move on also if no one wants to go into this. But I tend to use the phrase outcomes-based because then we know that what's, it's based on what's going in, whatever that may be from year to year. So that's just, that's just a thought, but I don't, I don't want to get into wordsmithing.
Okay, we'll work with staff and Dr. Prater to make sure that sentence captures the intent. Mark?
Yeah, so I, Evelyn's thought capture a lot for me. And I understand that stuff rapidly changes. And so the word consistent may not be usable. But it's really frustrating as a board member to watch staff work and work and work and then evaluate and then not be able to continue, let's see, monitoring their progress because they can't compare it to something from four years ago. So we have kids for 12 years and it seems to change in my mind every three years, the database becomes invalid. So I don't know how to capture that in a thought, but I just, I hear what Evelyn's saying and it just, I think it must be frustrating the staff. That's my two cents.
Well, also, I must say, it's not only frustrating to board members, it's also frustrating to superintendents and teachers.
No, that's what I said.
Yep, I'm, I'm just, I'm reaffirming what you're saying. And we're, you know, in our district, we've worked really hard to build a, an assessment culture that honors, that doesn't, it's not an I gotcha culture, but it's a, let's learn from each other culture. And when you, when we adapt and change the assessment, it becomes incredibly challenging. So what I can say is our staff has become, we've, we've really pivoted. And I think we've found assessments that work and teachers respect and honor. And, you know, the, the BAS is one example that seems to be very positively received by, by teachers. But, you know, and it's what's great about that. But you know, and it's, what's great about that assessment is it's, it's formative. It gives our teachers information that actually helps them in their instruction in real time. Whereas the SBACK, that has remained pretty much the same. But those ongoing local assessments that teachers use for math, for, for language, for writing. You know, we, we continue to wrestle with the consistency. And so hopefully with FastBridge on board, with our, our district writing assessments that have been stabilized over the last at least three years, I think we're, we're really, we're really going to address Mrs. Frame's stated concern as we move forward. I think we are finding consistency and solid assessment tools. So that's what I would say is I think we're, we're getting there, we're almost there and let's hold on to what we have. That would be my thought.
Any other major concerns that you have with the document as currently drafted? Mark.
Thank you, Adrian. So, and I guess this is a Rick question. I've heard a lot, and I may use the, this term incorrectly, but a lot about windows and mirrors, things that help students see themselves. And I, I'm not, I, I didn't see, and it may be in there, I didn't see that captured as a possible goal or objective for the district. And, and Rick, I don't know if you, if it needs to be there. It's one of my personal desires.
So Mark, Diane here, Rick had to step out of the meeting. So, yeah, my apologies for that. But I can capture that and get some feedback from him for you, if that works for you.
Hi.
So for the group, Mark, what do you mean when you say windows and mirrors?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm hoping.
You're on mute.
All right. I'm hoping I'm using it correctly, but when we talk about students of color, we talk about students maybe that are SED. A lot of the, a lot of the curriculum and a lot of the books and texts don't necessarily represent, don't have, they don't see themselves within that, within that document. I know as the father of a black child and a Hispanic child, it's, it, it was kind of difficult to find those anywhere. But I know that that's a term that's coming up a lot among, among staff. I've heard it. So I just don't know whether we need to capture it somehow.
Yeah. Let, let me get a little bit of information from him, Mark. I do believe that that's something that he has been working on over the course of the last year, maybe longer than that, especially with our librarian, Michelle Hopper. So let me get you some more details and I'll get back to the board.
Thanks.
Other comments? Mark? Going to sneeze? No, I'm not.
I'll just, I'll just keep my hand up. I only have three or four. So there was a brief discussion earlier about how does the board hear back how, how this document is doing and how it's affecting the district. And while I appreciate the superintendent and you using it as part of the evaluation. I think in this case, it's part of the evaluation of, of the board by the community. And while the superintendent is the only employee that reports to us, the board reports in, in some ways or is monitored by the community. We have for years gotten evaluations of programs, the results of evaluation of students. And I, and I think it's, I think it's important for any discussion of how we're doing on the strategic plan to be done in public. And I, I, I do have a slight problem with that. Well, actually, it's not a slight problem.
Yeah, thank you. And I, and I apologize. I said that I would bring that up in this part of the conversation and I forgot. So thanks for reminding. So our, our thoughts on advising the district in using that as your way to monitor this is that it's an existing process that you already have. We needn't want to add yet another process on top of ones that you're already using. In theory, the majority of the goals and concepts in this document are going to play out in other operational plans, like the LCAP and other things that do have their own set of processes to capture public engagement. And ultimately, it's, it's up to all of you, district staff and board, to decide how you want to check in on the implementation of the ideas in this. And it needs to work for you and your culture and be something that hopefully just gets seamlessly integrated. So that it's not something that sits on a shelf that you forget about. So that was one suggestion that we had. I guess I would look to staff.
I would like, I would like to add though, that much of, much of what we see when we're looking at Dr. Prater's evaluation is the, the information and a compendium of things that we've actually learned throughout the year. So Dr. Prater uses his planning calendar to report back to us on, on, on various, various things. And those are things that are linked to his essentially almost state of the district document that he presents to us as part of his evaluation. Is that, that, so I think we're already doing that. I don't know. I'd like Dr. Prater, I'd like to get your feedback on that. But I'm not, I don't think we need to do anything different than what we're doing right now, since most of that, since in fact, everything is coming up during our board meetings.
Yeah. So what Chris Unger, what Mr. Unger is saying is true. The, the, everything that will be built into this strategic plan, there will be board presentations regularly on. And we'll be able to then reference it and call it out, because I align everything to the board priorities, everything to the strategic initiatives. So that is incrementally what you, that, that is how we create our board agendas. So it's a, it's a beautiful way, I think, to keep, keep ourselves accountable and also be transparent. Now, one of the things that came to my mind when I was listening to Mr. Buckman, one piece that we could do, and I've seen districts do this across the country, is that they have an, an end of the year strategic reporting out. So it's a, it's, think of it as a, a document and a, a, a study session perhaps, where the board invites the community to come. And then the superintendent and his team goes through the strategic state of the state, if you will. Like this is how we did, this is how, how, what actions were taken. And here's where we did well, and here's where we didn't do so well. Or a work in progress. And, and, and that's something we can very easily add if the board wishes to add that at the end of the year or at the start of the year. One way or the other, it can be done. And that's certainly your, your call.
And if I can just add, now that I think about it, at the end of the year, that's when the board's working on the budget. And so that state of the state, state of the district sort of rolls right into budget planning or at least budget adoption. So it may have other implications as other value as well. I, I, I like that idea. So.
Well, and, and then also sort of, as we talk about one of the concerns that Evelyn had, as we review the LCAP. So a lot of, a lot of this should appear in the LCAP, a lot of this should appear in the budgetary pieces of the LCAP. And then the evaluation of whether what we planned has worked. So we're, we're doing that too.
Mark, I think Evelyn had her hand up earlier too. I want to check in with her. Was there something you wanted to add, Evelyn?
The only thing is I missed the initial what Mark said, so I was completely lost on this.
Oh, sorry. So we're talking about how, how you, how you check in on your plan and the implementation of your plan. And so what process are you using to do that? So we are suggesting using the process you use with Dr. Prater already to evaluate how things are going in the district on a biannual basis. Kind of in tandem with his review. We're also discussing this idea of maybe having a state of the district or open process presentation towards the end of the year, around the time that you are evaluating budget and other things. To have some transparency to that report out.
Well, the only reason I would, I like, and I think Dr. Prater, you, you came up with the idea, the only reason I kind of like that idea. I don't, I don't want to make more work for people or, you know, attend more, you know, meetings. But it kind of, you know, we, we get things throughout the year. And so it's hard to remember, like at the end of the year, you know, going back to the, oh yeah, that's that, that presentation we were talking about. So kind of at that end of the year, that combination might be, might be helpful in, right before we're going into looking at allocation. I mean, that's kind of the way I heard you say that, but I don't know. Cause I mean, you know, we are informed along the way. But as we move at the, but at the end of the year, what some of those presentations at the beginning are, are not quite as fresh in my mind. Or things have may have changed. So.
So do we have some general consensus, as long as this is something that staff and Dr. Prater feel like they have interest in as well? I guess I just want to check in. He, he mentioned it, but I want to make sure that that's something that he has interest in doing. Or would you rather explore that a little bit with staff before suggesting in addition?
I, I'm already thinking about how I can systematize it so that we can build it ongoing, knowing that it's a cumulative presentation. It's just going to be a big, a big presentation and I can build it while we're doing it in real time. And, and so that by the end of the year, we have a really nice sort of running record of what we've done. And, and it follows logically. So there's a way I could do that. And I think it would be a great historical record for the board and the community as well. So I, I could, I could easily envision that happening.
Is there general consensus on the board that that's something you'd like to see? This kind of state of the district at the end of the year as you go into future planning? So I'm seeing three, four thumbs, five, six. Okay. So we will work with Dr. Prater to add some language in the document in the measuring success section that captures his vision for that of something that is manageable for staff and meets the intent that we were just discussing. Okay, final thoughts on, on major concerns for the document? Okay, so I'm not, oh, I see Eve. I think you're on mute, Eve.
Just want us to be mindful of, are we going to try to subsume everything that we have called out under general headings? Or can we have it focused upon more directly? Like those, those items that we talked about, the financial, the civics and everything. Is that a direction we want to go to try to subsume it and have as few words and bullet points as possible? Or to have a little bit more specific direction for, for staff and the district as a whole? By adding maybe some sub points under there, a few that are clear.
So Eve, so we, but maybe Becca can bring that language back up on the screen if we need to. But we, we, we got the group to say that they felt reasonably good about the language that we came up with, which was a short goal statement. That would be added. I think most of them were going to be to the district wide goals. So again, this is a very broad overarching document. And the things that you call out in this document are going to come out into other operational plans. I keep saying the LCAP because that's one I know. Dr. Prater might be able to give some examples of other plans that these things are going to fall into. And then you might see some more specifics from staff in those documents.
Okay, thanks.
Any other final thoughts? Okay. Thank you so much for taking this journey with us. You know, I'm excited to see a vision and a mission and core principles that are going to work for the board and for staff. We have suggested in this conversation, just a few changes that we will make to the document. We will work with staff to do that. And there will be a track changes version and a clean version presented to the group. And I will also work with Chris and, and Dr. Prater to make sure that whatever you get next is in line with your general processes you use for reviewing things that are being presented to the board for adoption. And with that.
I, I guess just ending, Adrian, I want to thank you and Becca for all the hard work that you've done. I know this is, you know, in some ways, this has been a long drawn out process, but I think it's a necessary process. And I appreciate the, the work that you've done. And I look forward to seeing, and I think the board looks forward to seeing the, the final document that will be presented to us in August for our discussion and approval. And then the other thing that I think we, we want to do is recognize the staff and the hard work that our staff has put into this. Really, they're so busy, they're so busy doing other things. They recognize the importance of this. And they've been willing to spend the time to really get this right, knowing that this is what's going to help, you know, be our GPS for the next five years, especially as we have, you know, a lot of new administrators as we see things changing. So thanks to all the staff too. I really want to, want to just.
Yeah, you guys undertook this during a time where you had a lot on the plates of staff and the board. And then we tried to carve it up in Zoom in six sessions, which is also tricky. So props to the board members and staff for, for continuing to put this together. Especially when you hadn't had strategic visioning conversations like this in a little while. And so to, to have this kind of exercise can always be difficult to do when you have a lot of other things on your plate.
So, thank you, Adrian and Becca. I appreciate your work.
Okay, on that note, let's move on to item number 4.02, boards, I'm sorry, 5.01, resolution number 012122. Accepting property from escape hospitality. Mr. Pinkerton?
Yeah, Manny, can I share my screen real quick?
Give me one second.
I wanted to show the board the area on Google Earth really fast so you can have a realistic view of what we're talking about.
You should be able to do it now.
Okay, so you can see the area? Can you see my, the little hand cursor that I have? Can the board see that? Yeah, okay. So literally what we're talking about is there's a new hotel that is being constructed on the piece of property, which is right as you go into Morro Bay High. This is the entrance, whoops, this is the entrance to Morro Bay High School right here. And so this resolution, basically, there's a little piece of this bike lane. And I'm putting my, the hand over it that kind of shows you exactly what we're talking about. And so by us, by the board accepting the resolution today and approving this today. Basically, they are giving us the district this little piece of property that will ensure that we keep our bike lane. And honestly, I think for them, it's more of the liability of having a bike lane. You know, since we're going to have the bike lane and that extra little portion there, they would rather just say, you know, you guys keep it, you guys have it. As a school district and, you know, I've had Chris look at it. This was all drawn up by Lazzano Smith in terms of moving forward. And it just, to me, it, as well, it makes sense for us to, to move forward and go ahead and take this piece of property that ties right into our entrance, right into the bike lane. So that's what you have before you today is a resolution for the board to approve the quick, click, quick claim deed for that small piece of property.
And, and that's, that's an important part of the bike lane and system in Morro Bay, that little section right there. Right. I think what I'll do, I'll let, I'm, I'm going to go to the public first and see if there's any public comment. So I'm going to open it for public comment right now. And I'll ask Manny to let me know if any, since I can't really see the public. Ask Manny to let me know if anybody from the public would like to comment on this. if anybody from the public would like to comment on this item.
There is not.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board then for board discussion and a motion, if so, if somebody would like to make that. Ellen?
I think Catherine's.
I think Catherine had her hand up before I did.
Okay, Catherine? Catherine, you're on mute?
I have a question, and it requires looking at the map again. Can we pull that back up? I just want to be able to see more clearly if there is a, I guess you would call it like a mini curb on the inside so that bicyclists can't overturn and end up in the traffic lane. So I just wanted to see if we could include that in the plan. I don't know what those are called, they're the, they're kind of like road bumps.
I don't think you're going to see, I don't think you're going to see Catherine from the, the Google Earth image in terms of what you're talking about. And I, it's just the continuation of the current bike lane that's there. So if the bike lane has the curb, it continues through. If not, then we'll have to look at doing that when we redo that road through there.
Right, even if we could just put those bumps, you know, that would.
The ballers.
Who's not paying attention to just.
We did it at the, the district office, we have the green standards that we put along the side there.
Right, exactly like that.
But for the board knows, that does extend, you know, that bike lane, if, if you don't know, there's actually a bike lane that goes all the way around and parallels Highway 101 past the campus, right? Into the, the other neighborhoods there in Morro Bay, so.
And just Catherine, I, I've ridden that bike lane a bunch of times. And I believe that where it starts at the school, it, there is a curb. So there's the road that, that's the entrance to the school, and on the right-hand side is what we're talking about. I believe that there is, there is a separation between the road into the school and the bike lane, which Brian's talking about right now. Trying to think of how I, you know, I've ridden that, and, and you've, you've got to get on it or else you're in the road, essentially. So there is like an entrance point to it that keeps it separate.
I think we're saying the same thing, but I just want to be really sure because I want to make sure our kids are safe going to school on their bikes because we're encouraging them to do that, right? So I just want to make sure that if there isn't something already, that's kind of a thing that will indicate that you're now going over bicyclists into the auto lane. You know, you need to correct. I just want to make sure we're, if we have anything to say about that, that we make sure that's safe.
Other comments from board members? Would someone like to make a motion? Orion, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it, I was just trying to zoom in for, you can kind of see here a little bit better shot of the actual street view of it, Catherine?
Okay, yes, okay, it's a much larger berm than I thought.
See how it's, it's, it's this, it's this area right here that basically they're going to be, you know, donating to the school district, which I think is good for us, right? It ensures that we maintain that path.
Yeah, there's a lot more space there than I thought, so that's great, thank you.
Sure.
Ellen?
I was just going to say, it does seem to make good sense to us and follow what, what we try to do to have kids on their, you know, fewer cars on the road and all that, provide opportunities for them to safely, safely ride their bikes to school if they choose to. And with that, I would be happy to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Sheffer, a second by Mrs. Frame. Is there any further comment from the board about this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a vote. Ellen?
Yes.
Marilyn? Yes. Marilyn, you know what, I need to have you take it off mute and actually say it, I'm sorry. Marilyn?
I approve.
Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And I am a yes, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. We do have an item on, we do have some items on the consent agenda. So please let me know if you'd like something pulled. We have item 6.01, approval of certificated and classified personnel items. 6.02, memorandum of understanding for school resource officer. 6.03, summer administrative stipends. So I'll go to the public, see if there's anyone from the public that would like to address us on any of these issues. Mrs. Dawson?
There's no one from the public.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion or just further discussion. Would someone like to make a motion to approve items 6.01 to 6.03? Motion by Mrs. Roger, do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Dobler, Ms. Dobler Drew, hold on, let me just get this right. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Mrs. Roger?
Yes.
Ms. Dobler Drew?
Yes.
Dr. Eisenrath Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Frame? I'm sorry, Evelyn? You need to, I need to hear it from you, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Buckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheffer?
Yes.
And I am a yes, motion carries 7-0. I think that's it. Dr. Prater, our next meeting, I believe, is in August, is that not correct?
Yeah, in fact, we're having a meeting following this meeting with Mr. Unger and Dr. Eisenrath Rogers, just to briefly discuss a potential for a special meeting before our next scheduled August. I believe it's August 17th, I believe. And so the reason is, is because the state just released a new, I think it's SB 130, which talks about independent study requirements that districts are required to now do as they reopen their schools in August or September. And in order for that to happen, we must hold a special meeting and adopt, have a public hearing to discuss the independent study components within the law. So I'll get back to all of you to find a suitable date in the coming weeks prior to the start of school. So, so with that in mind, I will keep you posted. But our next official scheduled board date is Tuesday, August 17th.
Okay, and that will be a, that will be an evening board meeting. And then Mrs. Frame, are you there? A little bird told me that you're going to be a mother-in-law, is this true?
Yes.
Congratulations to your daughter.
Oh, thank you. I, I, I don't think she wanted this to be public record, but that's okay.
Well, I'll tell you what, I found out about it in Target, so.
Oh.
Ball town.
Yeah, you can't keep anything quiet in this town.
On that note, mum's the word, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. We'll see you all for the special board meeting, and we'll see you for sure all on the 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you.